Welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. This meeting is conducted over Zoom. According to the emergency order for Governor Charlie Baker. If you would like to comment or ask a question, you can type it in to the Q and A. And make sure you put your name and address with your question, please. Otherwise, we will not be able to read it. Okay, thank you. All right. First up are a whole bunch of minutes. So here we go. Executive session, August sixth, twenty twenty. Any comments, corrections? Do I have a motion to accept without release these minutes?
So moved, Wiseman.
Star second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Next are the executive session meeting minutes of Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Any comments or corrections? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes but not release them?
O'Neill, so moved.
Star, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Next are the Eastern School Committee Executive Session Meeting Minutes of Thursday, September third, twenty twenty. Are there any comments or corrections? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes of Thursday, September third, twenty twenty, but not release them?
So moved.
Star, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Next are the Eastern School Committee Meeting Minutes of Thursday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Are there any comments, corrections, or questions?
My only comment is that they were extremely thorough and well done. Thank you, Lynn.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the Eastern School Committee Meeting Minutes of Thursday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Next are the Eastern School Committee Meeting Minutes of Wednesday, December ninth, twenty twenty. Any comments, corrections, or questions? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
Wiseman, so moved.
Durant, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. One more. The Eastern School Committee Meeting Minutes of Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept these minutes. Do I have a second?
Star, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next is the discussion and possible vote to appoint a representative to the Change Order Authorization Subcommittee, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So you have a memo in front of you from PMA Consultants, who is our owner's project manager for the Blanch Eames School Project. It outlines to the SPC, the School Planning Committee, SPC Chair Jane Martin, a request to put together a a TRC, which is a Technical Review Committee. It's hard to believe, but we're actually at the point where we're talking about a groundbreaking. And it's very exciting, but we're staying on task, of course, and our owner's project manager is looking ahead to the eventuality that once things start moving, they are going to move very quickly. In any sort of project of this scale, it is, it is, well, for people who work in this area or have been involved in such a a project, it's well-known that any delays can be extremely costly and can hold up production for quite a long time. The School Planning Committee has been authorized to make the decisions about any change orders that must happen during the course of the project. Again, something like this, which is a hundred million dollar project, is anticipated to have change orders as they go through the process. The idea is to keep them for essential purposes and to keep the, the cost of them at a minimum. To that end, the, the project manager in all of his projects puts together one of these committees. It's typically a three-panel, a three-person panel that has the authority to make some changes, change order, changes in a timely fashion. So they will meet, it's a, it's a subcommittee of the School Planning Committee. They would meet weekly, sometimes several times a week. Certainly, a planned meeting every week to be up to date on anything that's happening, developing, any changes that are anticipated, but also to be at the beck and call, frankly, of the project manager. Should the contractor have any concerns or changes or things that have to take place and we can't convene the School Planning Committee in a manner quick enough to keep us on budget and on our deadline. So typically, the, as you can see, the TRC is comprised of a representative from Town Hall, a representative from the School Department, and a representative from the Towns Facilities Department. So the School Planning Committee met last night. Again, just quick details for, for those in the public that don't have this, this memo in front of them. This is to allow this three-person panel to make change order decisions for anything that's ten thousand dollars or less. If it is considered discretionary, if it is something that is considered necessary, then they may move forward with something more than that, but they have to report that to the School Planning Committee immediately. It's only if it would have a, a clear a clear impact on the project itself that they would be allowed to do that. Everything ultimately, in our regular meetings, everything gets reported back to the School Planning Committee for their input, for their questions. And this is just, this really is to keep the process going smoothly. Last night, the School Planning Committee did, we agreed to have David Twombly, who's our Director of Operations, to continue in his role in this project as point person and attend those meetings as necessary. We also had the David Fields from the Eastern DPW volunteered graciously to represent the Public Works. And we had thought that Connor Reed was going to be able to be the town representative. Unfortunately, Connor and I do not have the, the time to make this level of commitment. You really have to be available on a moment's notice if there's a need. And so we are actually going to reconvene and determine who the other member is going to be from the town. The Chair, Jane Martin, made a suggestion with, I think unanimous agreement from the group that there could be an additional School Department member of the team who has a working knowledge of education, pedagogy, students, small students, operations in a building on a daily basis. And everyone agreed that that was a, a great suggestion. And, you know, some of these change orders may be to make some tweaks that ultimately do not work in the best interest of small children. It's just something that not everybody has experience with. And so again, graciously, Anne Weintraub, the current principal of Center School, agreed to serve that role. So it is ultimately going to be a, a four-person committee. And three of them have already been determined, and one of them is coming from the town. Originally, Jane Martin had thought that potentially a member of the school committee might want to serve that role. However, as I said, Anne, Anne Weintraub did agree to do that. So you're, just to make sure you all understand what this committee is going to be, I wanted to explain it. I want to answer any questions you might have about it. And see, if you did have a, a strong feeling about having a school committee representative, perhaps in the place of Anne Weintraub, or if you wanted to appoint Anne Weintraub, Anne Weintraub to represent you in that regard.
I'll speak, Anne Weintraub deals with the young children. This is going to be part of her, you know, her school is moving there. And she's a wonderful administrator. She was a great teacher. So I am fully acceptable of Anne Weintraub representing the School Department.
I completely agree with Nancy's comments. I think she's a great choice. Can I ask one thing though, before someone else's comments? Who was the DPW person?
David Field.
Thank you.
Yep. He's the Director of the Eastern DPW.
Yeah, everyone on the committee was really happy Anne had volunteered and thought it would be a great idea to have her involved.
Yes, this is Caroline. I was just about to say that. In fact, Nancy, what you said was essentially what everyone in the group articulated. So I think Anne's a great choice. I was delighted that she volunteered.
I watched the meeting last night and agreed with the logic behind the selection. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with Anne as well.
Good. Do, do you need us to vote on that, Dr. Cabral, or can?
You don't. If you were going to appoint a school committee member, you would need to, but because you are allowing Anne to do it, you don't need to actually vote on it.
And when do you think we'll find out who the Town Hall person is going to be?
At our next School Planning Committee meeting.
Okay.
Which is, actually, it's not until March. We're at a point in the process now that we don't need to meet until March, but they did say it was fine since we have a, a committee. We're just waiting for that one person, and they're certainly not going to actually be meeting or making those decisions until the groundbreaking, that the beginning of March would be fine.
And speaking of the new school, it was on my list of things. Have we, has a contractor been chosen?
No, not yet. They are going, there is a subcommittee of which Dave Twombly is, is a member. They are going through those. We had a healthy amount of bids on the project for both general contractors and subcontractors, so that is encouraging. I, I would add that last night, we had a fantastic presentation by the design team. If you remember, we had some OA students and recent graduates that the design team had met with. They were so kind to hear from the students. They were blown away by their ideas and suggestions, and they have incorporated them into designs of the building. So we did also talk last evening about having a community and/or staff informational session and a community informational session, just to update everybody on the progress, because it's surprising, but there actually has been quite a bit of progress, and a lot of it now is very visual. It's tangible. People can see facades and designs, and it is, it's extremely exciting. So we want to share that. And so we're going to be working with the designer to come up with some ways to share the visuals and some narrative explanations of what's going on with the design right now in, in preparation for the groundbreaking.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, and thank you very much, Anne Weintraub. You are awesome. All right, number four is personnel changes. Dr. Cabral?
Yes, we have several retirements and resignations of really experienced staff. It's very difficult to it's, it's bittersweet for us, as we, as we always say, but this is, this is definitely a night with some very experienced educators that, you know, we love dearly, and we're sad to see them go, but excited for them. The first is Donna Davy, Madonna, Donna Davy. She began her career in EPS as a long-term sub from May ninety-four to June ninety-four. Then she was appointed to the position of a library resource, resource aide at Northeastern Grammar School from ninety-five to ninety-six. Then Donna was the technology liaison advisor for the Center School from ninety-eight to two thousand. And in two thousand six, she was appointed as a technology liaison for the FL Olmsted School, when it was in that iteration. Her title changed subsequently to District Technology Facilitator in two thousand nine. And she remains the PK to five technology facilitator today, after twenty-five years in the district. So she is certainly multi-talented, as you can see. She plans to retire on February second, so this will be a mid-year retirement. And very, very sad to see this professional leaving us after so long. I do know that my mother was, and my son are, are technology people in schools, technology facilitators. And they, they know the feeling when staff members see them coming. And it is absolutely true with Donna, too. It's not just her lovely demeanor and personality, but, you know, it, it is a lifeline for an educator to have that technology facilitator turn the corner when you're, when you're experiencing an issue, and she's certainly effective at her position. So Donna is watching this evening. She does not wish to participate, but if you wish to make any comments, she certainly could hear you.
All right, I'll read her letter. Dear Dr. Cabral and School Committee, I am writing this letter to inform you that I will be retiring February second, twenty twenty-one from my position as District Technology, Technology Facilitator, after twenty-five years of service to the Eastern Public School System. I have enjoyed working for Eastern, and I greatly appreciate the opportunities provided to me. I cherish the memories and friendships I have made during my years of service. I will miss working for EPS, but I look forward to what awaits me in the next chapter of my life. Sincerely, Donna, Madonna Davy. Donna's been great. I do have, funny, Cindy Hall would not be anywhere without Donna Davy helping her when she used to write the retirement booklet for the EEA Retirement Party. Cindy had no clue, and Donna just kind of took her right through. But she's done, Donna Davy's done so much stuff. She has a wonderful family, and I wish her all the best. Donna, you are going to love retirement, let me just tell you. Any other committee, we do have somebody that sent a remark in, so if any committee members first would like to go and speak about Donna, if you know her. Okay, Chrissy, go ahead.
So first, I just want to wish Donna a happy retirement. She is so loved in the elementary schools and throughout the district. She will be greatly, greatly missed. In fact, I had a meeting with principals today who also just reiterated what a big loss this is for, for their staff as she has been so instrumental in supporting the work that they've been doing. So this remark is from actually an employee, Ken Flanagan, who lives at One Old Colony Road, Mansfield. He's not an Eastern resident. And he said, Donna Davy, without a doubt, is one of the kindest, most caring people I've had the honor and privilege to work with in my thirty-five years with the Eastern Public Schools. No matter what role she was in, as a parent via the school PAC or TEMPO, as a librarian, or as a technology facilitator, Donna was also so willing to help anyone and everyone out with whatever needed to be done, no matter how busy she was. From the simplest of tech issues to large-scale fundraisers for Fee or the Music Department. The Richardson Olmsted family, where Donna was based, will miss her very much, and we wish her all the very best for a long and happy retirement.
Thank you, Ken.
Nancy, it's Caroline.
Okay, you, you know, Caroline, Caroline, before you start, you know what you need to do tonight? Do you know how to do the thumbs up thing or the raise your hand thing?
You know, I've been looking for that on my ancient iPad, and I cannot find that option. I was, I mean, I, I have it on my phone, but my phone's so teeny. And I apologize. I'll explain to you.
I'm only giving you a hard time. Go ahead, just speak up.
Well, I just, I should explain to people that for, for reasons that I really don't want to go into, I, I just can't have the camera on tonight. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I thought Ken Flanagan's comments were totally spot-on. I mean, everything he said was very accurate about Donna. I've actually known her that entire time. And she was just someone who was so utterly dedicated to her job always and invested in the Eastern Public Schools. So I second everything Ken said.
They're going to be hard to fill her shoes, especially with all this Chromebook and updates and everything else we're going through. So Donna, congratulations. I'm going to make a motion to accept Madonna Davy's retirement with regret.
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Cabral?
Thanks. Our, our second retirement this evening is Erica Sade. Erica began her career in EPS in nineteen ninety-seven. She was a project early teacher at Center School. In two thousand one, she was offered a full-time teacher as a project early, in the project early program. She worked at FL, FL Olmsted as a PE facilitator and moved to Richardson in two thousand seven as a project early teacher. In two thousand ten, she moved to the Parkview School. And in two thousand twelve, she was appointed as a preschool teacher, where she remains today. She plans to retire at the end of this school year. And Erica also served as the pre-K coordinator. When I first started as the Assistant Superintendent, she was in that role and did a fabulous job. It is a lot of detail. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of intake, a lot of parent communications and so forth. And she was just fantastic in the role. Again, bittersweet moments when she decided not to do that. However, it gave us the opportunity to have her work with more students as a full-time pre-K teacher, which was just great for our kids. Erica is someone who is wonderful to watch with the young children. Certainly has the temperament, the demeanor. She's a kind person and an excellent educator. And we will be sorry to see her and her experience go, but certainly wish her the very best in her retirement.
I'll read her letter. Dear Dr. Cabral and the Eastern School Committee, I am pleased to announce that I will be retiring at the end of this contractual school year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. After a forty-year career in early childhood education, twenty-three years teaching in the Eastern Public Schools, it is time to retire my circle mat. I have always been very committed to the young children in Eastern and hope that my lasting legacy will be that I have created a sense of community in my classroom, as well as growth and progress in all of my students. I wish the program well, and my hope is that it will continue, that it continues to grow and teach the young children of Eastern. Sincerely, Erica Sade.
Erica is in attendance this evening, if you wanted to.
So Erica.
Give her an opportunity to speak.
Okay, Erica was teaching when I was teaching, and I remember being union president, and, you know, there's always things to deal with. So she was gracious and lovely and couldn't be a better person. So very happy for you, Erica. And again, you are going to love retirement. Anyone else on School Committee want to make a comment at this time? Okay, then, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Jen.
Sure, I, I, I don't know Erica personally, but I know that she's really beloved by the, the PK community. I've heard nothing but really wonderful things, and to, to be in that role with that age group for so long is extraordinary. So we know the burnout rate is very high. That's amazing. So congratulations on your retirement. Well-earned.
And you said, Dr. Cabral, you said Erica's here and she would like to speak?
I did say she was here. I don't know if she would like to speak, but Erica, you do have the opportunity now, if you'd like. I have brought you into the room.
Okay. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I think you spoke eloquently of, of everything I've done, and I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the Eastern Public Schools. It's been, it's been a journey, but I am ready. I'm ready to join those, those that are retired and, and my new chapter in my life. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Would anyone like to make this motion? All right, I'll do it. I'm going to make, I will make the motion to accept Erica Sade's retirement with regret.
O'Neill, second, also with regret.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Cabral?
Hey, our final retirement this evening is Karen Silverstein. Karen began her career in EPS as a half-time kindergarten teacher at Parkview in nineteen ninety-seven. In nineteen ninety-eight, she taught at Parkview and Center as a full-time teacher. In nineteen ninety-nine, she was transferred to Parkview full-time. She was selected for professional teaching status in two thousand, and she moved from kindergarten to grade one at Parkview in two thousand four. Then in two thousand thirteen, transferred to Moreau Hall as a reading specialist, where she remains today. Karen plans to retire in June twenty twenty-one, after twenty-four years of service in the district. When I began as an Assistant Superintendent, Karen was a reading specialist. And in that role, we, Chrissy now, in that role, we did have an opportunity to work closely together. And she is a fantastic reading specialist and colleague. She has been involved in some significant changes in the district in terms of how we assessed student data and use it for decision-making for kids and new, you know, the choosing new resources for the district. And just has done a tremendous amount for the literacy in this district as a member of the literacy team. And she is one of our losses to a grandchild that we suffer frequently. She is a, a recent Mimi, and we are very, very happy for her that she has that wonderful, that wonderful grandson to, to occupy her in her well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Is she here tonight? She is, okay.
She is, yeah.
Let, let me read her letter first, please. Okay. Dear School Committee, Dr. Cabral and Mr. Higgins, I am writing this letter to inform you of my intent to retire from the Eastern Public Schools in June. It has been an honor for me to have been a teacher to so many children over my career. I have taught at Center School as a kindergarten teacher, at Parkview School as a kindergarten, kindergarten teacher, and kindergarten and first-grade teacher, sorry, and finally, as the reading specialist at Moreau Hall. Over the years, I have been part of so much change, been a part of so many new endeavors, and been able to see that anything is possible if you have high expectations of what children are capable of when shown love and respect. When the district had formal committees, I had the opportunity to participate as a committee member. I was a part of the science, the math, the report card committee, and currently a member of the literacy team. Also, on the district level, I have had the honor and privilege to serve as an Eastern Educators Association Building Representative, and have been able to partake in several negotiations dating back to Dr. Bill Simmons. As a classroom teacher at the school level, I participated in many committees, as well from grade-level leader to school council member as a teacher and a parent. These opportunities have allowed me to grow as a leader and as well as help to make positive changes and an impact in the district. My husband and I moved to Eastern specifically because of all the wonderful things we had heard about the school system. We raised our two daughters here, who both gained a wonderful start in their education. They both went on to get their advanced degrees. Now I am, now I am moving on to the next phase of my life, a role that I have longed, looked forward to, and probably the most important role of my life, being a grandmother. As my entire family has moved to the Chicago area. As my entire family has moved to the Chicago area, I will be looking forward to providing care for my grandson. Though I will miss my many colleagues throughout the district, the family connections of my students that I have made over my career and my Moreau Hall family, I am ready to spend every day being a Mimi. Sincerely, Karen Silverstein. So congratulations, Karen. We've worked together before many, in many ways. Also, I believe I had one of your daughters in my class and I names escape me because I'm old now, but uh, anyway, they lovely girls. Um, so, and Karen, the, the stuff you do at Moreau Hall is unbelievable. You know, you get, I remember a few dress-up days or Halloween something so to get the kids motivated, you and Mr. Higgins and the rest of the crew up there. You're amazing. So thank you very much for everything you've done, helping the kids read and learn and become those little human beings that just thrill us from top to bottom. Alright, would anyone else like to speak? Oh, Caroline, go ahead. You found it.
I did. It was, it was buried beneath another category.
I'm gonna give you a chip plus for tonight.
Uh, I just wanted to say, and certainly this has already sort of been covered. Karen is one of those people that just always, speaking of raising one's hand, always had her hand raised to volunteer for extra things. I mean, I, I felt like I was constantly running into her when there were special presentations or special informational sessions or, or whatever. I think she just was really such a dedicated um, and honestly delightful educator. So it is, it is truly a loss. Oh, by the way, I just want to mention, you, you said that was the last retirement, but we are gonna be talking about Dr. Durn, right?
That is not retirement, but we will talk about it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Anyway, that's what I had to say about Karen.
Uh, anyone else on school committee? Okay, go ahead. Uh, Jen, sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, um, uh, my, I, I'm pretty sure none of my kids had Karen. I'm, I'm going back through going, I know, I don't think. But she's definitely one of those names that among my, especially my older kids' friends. It's still, these, these kids are in their twenties now. You hear, Mrs. Silverstein, she was the best. She was awesome. She did this, she did that. So it is uh, she is quite a legacy and I wish, I wish you a great retirement, Karen.
And you said she is here?
She is. I don't know if she would like to speak, but she is here. But I think Chrissy wants to speak first, so um, Karen, I will uh, have Chrissy speak and if you don't unmute by the time she's done, then I will know that you would rather not speak, which is perfectly fine. But if you want to unmute, you can speak uh, right after Chrissy.
We also have a comment from a parent um, that I want to read, but before I read that, I just, I do want to say thank you to Karen for guiding me at, when I started as an assistant superintendent here in Eastern. Um, through all the, all that's been going on in reading in the elementary schools, she has been so instrumental. And her knowledge and her expertise are going to be so missed. I mean, we, we had a true expert in, at Moreau Hall with Karen. So I'm so envious that you're going to be with your grandchild, your, 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 this is such a great next chapter for your life and I'm just so happy for you. But we will miss you for sure. Um, the comment is from Beth Gaylor at Nine Day Street. She said Karen was my daughter's kindergarten teacher in two thousand two, two thousand three. She started her off on a great journey of learning. She will be missed. So thank you very much.
Karen, would you like to speak?
I wasn't going to, but I just wanted to say to Nancy that um, it, my kids are actually watching this in Chicago right now, Lauren and Ashley, and I think my husband is watching it too, although he hasn't texted me. Um, but um, Lauren was, Ashley was like, it was me, it was me that I, that you had.
Caroline, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, and I appreciate all, all of the words and, and all the sentiments, but I, I can't say that there's a better job taking care of um, my grandson and I think it'll, you know, just bring me so much joy and I'm ready for this next step in my life. So thank you.
Congratulations, Karen.
Karen, I'll tell you, retirement's great, but being a grandmother is even better.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Oh, my God. We FaceTimed today and I just
I would show pictures right now, but that would be, you know, against the rules. So no. But good luck with everything, Karen. Uh, we're so happy for you.
Um, thank you, thank you.
And you've just, you know, from start to finish, very good. I'm gonna make a motion to um, accept the retirement of Karen Silverstein with regret. Do I have a second?
Can I have a second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Karen.
Chairwoman DeLuca, if I can, um,
Go ahead.
There's one more comment for Karen from Vanessa Fis- oh goodness, I'm sorry. Uh, Vanessa Fis- Fisso, twelve Ridgewood Road. Karen really helped Priya at Moreau Hall in March two thousand nineteen. She will miss you. Happy retirement.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you very much. We, we're very fortunate to have all of you in our system. Alright, uh, Dr. Cabral, this is a resignation.
Yes, we don't typically uh, discuss resignations. There, we have resignations for different reasons. Um, whether someone has a career change or moves um, elsewhere. Um, however, this is, this is a, a, a significant one and um, after a significant length of service. And so um, I am bringing it forward this evening. Uh, Dr. Michael Durn has been with the Eastern Public Schools as our school physician for thirty-four years. Dr. Durn plans to resign as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And um, I, I have to say, it is an area I have never had to worry about. So thanks a lot, Dr. Durn. No, just kidding. It's uh, I, we're actually researching now because there are actually no files in this office of how to advertise for a district doctor. Uh, however, we um, you know, obviously we had a very competent professional in Dr. Durn. And um, people probably don't realize the things that we have a doctor on board for, for everything from physicals to um, orders, standing orders um, for our school nurses. I know every school nurse has thoroughly enjoyed working with Dr. Durn and so he will uh, definitely be missed. And, but we are very extremely, extremely thankful for his dedicated service for thirty-four years. And I wanted to make sure that we expressed that sincere appreciation for um, all that he's done for the Eastern Public Schools.
Caroline?
I apologize that I mistook that it wasn't, uh, it was not actually a retirement, which makes perfect sense since it's was really more of a support um, role. But Dr. Durn has been so utterly dedicated to the entire school system for so many years. I mean, I can remember really when I first got on school committee, he was always at sports events. He was really involved. I mean, aside from being the official medical person that, you know, is, is a requirement and it will be a challenge to find someone um, at all, certainly the odds of finding someone as capable and dedicated as Dr. Durn, I'm afraid, might be quite slim. But I'm, you know, we'll hope for the best, but I I, I think that we all owe Dr. Durn a, a debt of gratitude because he's been a phenomenal support um, to the system for a very long time.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments about Dr. Durn? Okay.
Dr. Durn is here this evening. I don't know if he wishes to speak, but certainly, uh, Dr. Durn, if you would like, you have the opportunity. I just gave access to the wrong person, excuse me. The um, participants keep coming in and going out. So every time I, I go to click on something, it changes. Uh, but Dr. Durn, you do have access if you would like.
Sure, thank you. And, and thank you for the kind comments. Um, I'd like to begin by saying, uh, Donna Davies, as I know her, I was also her family, her family's physician, her children and her. And I will tell you that hmm, if my wife knew that she was resigning, there's no question she would have definitely not even given a second thought about her retirement. Because Donna Davies, the support she gave to the folks, as was stated, my wife will tell you, she would have not survived in the school system without her. So uh, kudos to Donna from myself also. You know, when I took the job on many, many years ago, it was a labor of love then, and it's a labor of love as I'm leaving. Uh, I, I felt that sup- my support with the school nurses of which Sue Mill today is, you know, my, my lead person. I feel that the town of Eastern has been very fortunate to have these nurses. I've learned from then. Um, I've grown as, I think I wrote in my letter, you know, the fact that this, the Eastern Public School System and the town of Eastern had the confidence to allow me to take on this role um, was an honor and a privilege and it still is. And uh, I can't even imagine how many uh, folks that I was able to interact and intersect with, as I said, the administrators and coaches like Jim Mitchell and Elaine Clement, you know, Holbrook, I, I, you know, the list goes on and on, working with the EMTs, the fire department, the the police department, you know, it all intersected in my role and, and it was a great experience and having the opportunity to do it will, will never be something I can duplicate or replicate. So I thank you all for the opportunity that you gave me to give back to the community that I loved. And uh, thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Durn. And uh, yeah, you've been around a long time and we all um, appreciate everything that you've done for the Eastern Public Schools, the, the nurses, but also, you know, as the doctor on the sideline when uh, injury happened and things like that. So um, thank you very much. And we hope you and your wife enjoy retirement uh, when all this COVID nonsense is over.
Yes, you can go to lunch with Donna Davy.
Yeah, well, I'm, I am far from being retired. I am uh, I'm, I left my primary care practice two years ago and I think most people know I've taken on I, 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 I don't like to call it the burden. I've taken on the task of working with substance use disorder now, still with signature. Uh, and as far as retirement with my wife, she and I continue to have the debate about how long that should last. So we'll see where that goes.
I will, do it, do it nicely.
Again, thank you very much for uh, giving me the opportunity all these years.
We wish you the best. Thank you, Dr. Durn.
Bye-bye now.
Bye. Okay, we do not have to vote on that. Go ahead, Chrissy.
We have a comment here from Allison Daly, um, thirty-two, Deborah Lane. Dr. Durn has been my role model throughout my undergrad and graduate degree. He even acted as my preceptor in my initial year as a nurse practitioner doing clinicals. He's an incredible physician who I've learned, who I have learned so much from. He will be missed.
Thank you very much. Alright. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Um, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar first reading. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. As usual, you have three drafts in front of you for your review. Um, I will say that uh, draft number two, we do realize that the first day for all students is on Rosh Hashanah, so we wish to change that. So we would ask that you not consider draft two any longer. For drafts one and three, um, the, the professional development, we have allocated those days for November twelfth. Because it is not a presidential election, we do not have to close down schools on um, Election Day. And since um, since November eleventh is on a Thursday this year for uh, of course, the Veterans Day holiday, we thought it um, advantageous to families to have professional development on that Friday, the twelfth. So school will be closed for students and we'll have professional development on November twelfth. The second professional development day will be in January, on January fourteenth, which is a Friday. Other than that, the other dates you see for half-days and uh, for parent-teacher conference half-days, those do not real, those do not digress from the typical school year calendar. The only other difference you will see is the start date for school. So I'll draw your attention to draft one, which has students, uh, excuse me, which has staff starting on Wednesday, September first, and students starting on Thursday, September second. The only difference between that and draft three is that the students would be starting on the first and the staff would be starting on August thirty-first. In other words, it's just one day sooner. Typically, uh, in that, and if we did go with that calendar, it would give us a June fourteenth last scheduled day of school, of course, barring any um, snow days or strange world happenings. Uh, so typically, uh, you'll might remember historically, I should say, every year when there is no substantive difference um, of a date to start school, the administrative team typically prefers the earlier of the start dates. Uh, that has a lot of implications, particularly for the high school um, in terms of how many senior, how many days we can get in for the seniors, how many days before the assessment season in the spring. Um, so we just um, would say that overall, our recommendation would be draft three, but we don't have any significant concern otherwise with draft one. Chrissy, did you want to add anything from your conversation this afternoon with the principals?
I just wanted to share that I think in your packet, it states, it, it might highlight uh, November second as the professional development day. So that is a change.
Yeah.
That is, right.
That's gonna ask about that.
The second is Election Day, but in further consultation with the cabinet, we thought that it would be, as I said, advantageous for families um, to have that actually on the Friday. Because that first week of November, the students would have a day off and then the second week of November, they would have a day off. And it gets a little disjointed, so we created a three-day weekend step.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jen.
So I know, so with that PD day that we're talking about for November twelfth, is that a day that normally would have been the long weekend in October? Or did I make that up?
Typically, uh, while more often than not, it's on Election Day. Like this, this year, we had it on Election Day because we have elections. Uh, we have voting in our schools that we really try to close down when we anticipate a great deal of traffic or um, participation. Uh, but for next year, for our educational purposes, it fits better to, to take place on the twelfth for continuity of instruction. And of course, as I said, it has the side benefit of potentially being advantageous to families. But um, in the future, you may see it on Election Day again. It really depends on what is happening that year.
Yeah, and Chrissy? I think um, in the past, two years ago and years prior, there was a PD day in October and November.
Okay.
And, and what happened was we found with the staff that having two PD days kind of back-to-back and then nothing for the remainder of the year was a really, was very difficult. So we extended that by, by creating the professional development day instead of the October date to have it in January. And we're finding that that's a better timeframe.
Got it. Okay. I just, is there any concern about, because I always feel like we deal with no school November? Um, was where we don't have Election Day to deal with this year. Was there any consideration of keeping the twelfth as a day and then moving the PD day to the long October weekend? Um, would that be more disruptive, less disruptive? I just, I just, I really feel for parents who struggle to cover all of that childcare and, and schedule changes and everything in November that happens every year.
Um, October twelfth is, is a little early in the year. Um, we find, excuse me, we find typically, especially the younger learners or students who have never been in a school before, literally kindergarten, pre-K and about half of our first grade or about a third of our first graders. Um, they get their routines going right about the end of September and we kind of like to keep that going.
Okay.
Having that one-day disruption, but it is not, I don't think it substantively would torpedo our efforts as a school district if we did that. If you want us to go back and talk to the cabinet about that, we certainly could. You're not voting on this tonight? It is a first reading only.
Yeah, I think if you could, if you could just ask about it, but your, the logic there makes sense that it, it, it would be probably is pretty disruptive from a probably is pretty disruptive from a, a teaching and routine standpoint. Yeah, I I'd be interested just hearing their feedback on, on that.
Are there any other comments on these uh, proposed calendars? Caroline?
I just wanted to ask Jen, I I'm a little bit confused about what your concern is about October as compared to the November. The professional development day, because it seems like having it um, on the Friday, you know, obviously, it it constitutes four solid days for families rather than a day off and then one day back and then the weekend. To me, that seems more disruptive in a way than the other option.
I agree, it's not, it's not great, it's not great either way, but it's, it's four days off plus two half-days in the same month. It's just a lot.
It is a lot in the same month, and I actually agree with that, so it's one of those, you know, which is worse, but and I kind of feel like, you know, just having a day off and then having to go back for one day and then having two days off solid like that would be even more disruptive, but I mean, that's just a, I mean, I don't have any data to support that, and we can't take one of those instantaneous votes like the kids can at the high school with their special um, push-button thing, I forget what it's called. Yeah, anyway, I just, I just, to me, I was trying to find out, I I do agree with you that that is in one month, that's a lot of um, disruption, but at the same time, I, I honestly feel it would be worse to to do it the other way, but just my opinion.
As a point, as a point of information, we do have data that when we do have those singleton days, we have a very high level of um, absenteeism for students, so um, sometimes it is a compromised day only because of the high level of absenteeism.
Yes, that makes sense.
I also would anticipate that being higher in case, um, if hopefully by November, we'll be back to normal. And I would anticipate that many people are anxious to go on vacations. So that would be an opportunity for people to pull their children out of school, um, if it wasn't a day off.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so this will be on the next agenda?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, so we'll look at this again on January twenty-eighth. All right, next is pool testing discussion, Dr. Cabral.
And so I will actually give you a little bit of background on our pool testing um, efforts, or I should say our testing efforts this year. And then I'm going to ask Chrissy to sort of fill that in with um, the information about the most recent opportunity that we have that she attended the informational session for. So it it, just to sort of take you down memory lane here for a second, uh, people have asked why we haven't engaged in testing. So I thought I would take the opportunity to sort of revisit the efforts that we have investigated to this point. Uh, the very first um, attempt was in the summer. Uh, we were, we did become aware of the plans that Stonehill had. Many people might be aware that they did regular testing of their students very successfully. We investigated that and found that that, uh, they were going to charge us uh, eighty thousand dollars per week for that testing, just for staff. That did not include students, so that was for staff only. That was completely untenable for us for probably obvious reasons. Um, so we did hold off on that. Then we had an opportunity through the Department of Education, the Binax Now, I think you may remember the presentation we did on the Binax Now antigen testing. Uh, we did have concerns about that. We did meet with the the nurses, we did meet with the Board of Health on that and and shared all the details with them. Aside from the fact that it was an antigen test, which is not um, the most reliable test, that that's the PCR, which we do request of um, our staff and students. Uh, it also was um, a kind of program where it it sort of was like a seed program. They were going to provide testing at first, but then you had to take over the cost for it, and it it was going to be quite costly for us. The other item was that we did not have the staff in place to do the testing, to collect the testing, to send the testing. So our staff literally had to be responsible for all of those duties, and we ju, we're completely out straight. Uh, I don't have to remind you that we eliminated dozens of positions last year, and we started this year um, before really knowing what we were coming into, really short-staffed in many areas. And we just, we don't have anyone um, extra or or who can even be um, assigned to those kinds of duties. So that became something that was impossible. It also was only for students who were symptomatic or staff who were symptomatic. And we didn't see really for the 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 cost and the effort or or the hiring of staff or such a thing. We didn't see the value added, because if a student is symptomatic, we send them home anyway. Um, if we had gotten a negative test, we still would have sent them home to get a PCR to confirm it. If they had gotten a positive test, we still would have sent them home. So it it really didn't add value in terms of um, early detection in any way, because the student's already symptomatic in order to get that test. Third, uh, most recently, I worked with Congressman uh, elect Jake Auchincloss's office to investigate three other companies that we could potentially work with for testing of staff and students. It was a a better quality test in terms of reliability. It was um, um, for anyone who is, for anyone, so they didn't have to be symptomatic, they could be asymptomatic. However, the uh, month of January, the tests would be free, but after that, we would have to purchase the tests, which was approximately twenty to thirty thousand dollars per test period. We also had to provide, again, all of the staffing to do that, and the space and the time. We have um, between staff and students, we have over four thousand people in the district. That's eight hundred, just over eight hundred people a day, a school day, to be tested. So in addition to, uh, you know, the time for such an endeavor, one staff member, two staff members can't do that. Um, that was our first opportunity for what's called pool testing too, and I will talk about that in a second. It was less expensive because it was pool testing. Uh, but as I said, it still would have been a cost after January, and we would have to have someone collect the samples, uh, prepare the samples, ship the samples, um, keep track of all permission slips from parents, keep track of anyone who had not gotten um, a c- clearing on a test. Uh, what that means, for example, is the pool testing, other than the other individual tests, is there is a a tube, and instead of one swab that is used on um, on a child to go into a tube and get tested, there would have been between ten and thirty swabs that would go into the same tube and be tested all as one test sample. That is less expensive for, because obviously, you're testing one en masse instead of thirty, say, separately. However, if one in that test pool is positive, the entire thirty get flagged. And all thirty of those people now, because of course, it's a pool sample, you have no idea who actually is positive, the entire pool has to quarantine while all of them then get PCR tests to determine who actually is um, positive. And so it, it, you know, it affects a lot of people, obviously. Um, it's difficult to do to uh, to do several swabs in one tube for staff, for example. You don't want thirty staff members out because someone, one of them may be um, positive. There are just a lot, there was a lot involved with that that made it difficult for us to do. This most recent one um, is a little bit different in the sense, it's still pool testing. It still requires our staff, and it still requires us to buy the tests. Um, the biggest different, difference at this point is timing. We have recently been notified that there is further, there is going to be further federal stimulus money coming our way. Unfortunately, we have no idea how much that's going to be, and we have no idea when we're going to get it. We did have what's called the SIR uh, stimulus funds last year. We are presuming it is going to be for the same purpose, but we don't know that. If it is, then it can be used for this. We can purchase tests with this, we can purchase temporary staff to to um, implement the program. We don't know that yet, and so for that reason, we haven't actually committed to this, because we don't have this in our regular budget. Um, but it is something that we are strongly considering and may move forward with. And um, the other details of this particular pool testing initiative, I will, this is the one that the governor uh, announced last week for anyone that saw that in his um, press conference. But I will let uh, Chrissy give you any further details and we'll answer some questions for you. But while we did put forward the district as um, as a district of interest, and we did participate in the um, information, informational session, um, we have not moved forward yet at this time, and the biggest piece is we're waiting for um, to find out if we have funding that can help us pay for this. Chrissy?
Sure, thank you. So the, what's being offered through DESI is a six, an initial six-week launch. Um, and DESI again is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the six-week launch, um, districts and schools can, will um, run, they'll receive test kits. They'll receive for free, at no cost. They will receive support from a testing service provider and the software at no cost. So the first six weeks is all funded through DESI. Um, however, following the six weeks, we would be committed to funding all of this on our own. Um, and that, that's one thing to take into consideration, as Dr. Cabral said, regard regarding funding that we may may or, may receive through the SR two grant. Um, however, we're not exactly sure how much we are, we are going to be receiving for that. Um, if we do not participate in the six-week launch, we can still use the, the, DESI will have a statewide contract, and we can purchase the services once they're available off the statewide contract if we don't participate in the six-week, um, the six-week trial. So just an overview of it, um, this one in particular, it does, like Dr. Cabral said, you're, you take ten to twenty-five samples in this particular pool, uh, where they, the the students, the in in most cases, they actually can swab themselves in the, in the upper grades. Um, in fact, they will train somebody to be an observer of the swabbing. They're little Q-tips, and they just, they they penetrate just the very inside of your nose. They then go into a batch or a pool, and they're tested with a PCR test. Once that comes back, um, the results are delivered in approximately twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And the samples can be administrate, administered by all trained school staff as well. Um, after the six weeks, but during the six weeks, you know, the service providers will provide support. They, the, if the pool test results in negative, then all individuals within the pool are presumed negative and remain in school. And if they are, if they, if the pool does test positive, then this is where it gets tricky, because we will need to commit to administering, they are recommending the Binax, the Abbott Binax Now. The Abbott Binax Now is um, is actually an antigen test. It is not a PCR test. Um, and that is, and we would administer it right on site to determine what what they're, what some of the sample districts even shared was they had like a drive-through where a staff, where a trained staff member would be giving them the the Abbott, the Abbott Binax Now um, a test right there in the drive-through. Um, and then at that point, all individuals, they, they'll also be required to take an additional PCR test. So they, that's, that's kind of the overview um, of of what the actual program is about. There are many districts that are, or some, uh, not many, there are some districts that are implementing it right now. They had those, they are the larger districts, the larger cities, um, Salem, they had uh, Salem on there, they had Watertown um, with some more resources, and the superintendents were sharing exactly what they did to to start the program up. They said that it is um, an ease for staff knowing that everyone in their classroom, for example, they they do rec, they don't recommend at the elementary level, mixing classes. So if one class would be in a pool together. Um, or um, and and so, and then at the, at the secondary level, they utilize other, other kinds of um, groupings of students. But at the elementary level and at our middle school, where we're keeping our kids in the same cohort, in the same class, um, they would, they would keep the class together within the the testing specimens. So one of the um, the, one of the things too, is that we would have to be responsible for sending all the specimen out. Um, we also can decide to participate in one school. We don't necessarily have to do it in the whole district. Um, so that was another option as well. There, we have to say that we have appropriate PPE in order to do the testing, that is a requirement. And um, we would also have to have authorization and consent from staff and students. We would not be able to to perform um, the the test on any student or staff member that does not give their consent. And I think that's it, just double-checking my notes. Yes.
Uh, in summation, I would, I would just say that, like pretty much everything else we discussed, it sounds very cut and dried and very, you know, like a no-brainer, like why would we not do that? Uh, we just have some considerations that we have to um, follow up on and make sure that we can do this effectively, make sure we have staff to do this uh, effectively. Uh, and make sure that it makes sense for, for our district and our application of it. So there are some challenges there. I'm not saying they're insurmountable, but we are still investigating them. Do you have any questions about it?
Uh, so if we decided to opt in, how soon could this be up and running?
We have to submit, uh, well, we submitted just our interest, uh, which is actually due tomorrow. And the the DESI will notify us if we are considered um, eligible. I don't think there's really any requirements to be eligible, except we have to prove that we have everything in place. And that's, that's the, that's kind of the, the hard part, is understanding the staffing that would be needed and the team to start this up, because that is something that each of the superintendents shared, that there was a very strong team to to really monitor the logistics of it, to start the program up. Um, in fact, one, the superintendent in Salem talked about how he reallocated a central office position to head the whole, the whole operation up and for, you know, and then they had a team underneath, underneath that central office person.
Um, so I think when the, I can't find it now, but I think with the, this was announced last week, there was, one of the news sources had a link to an info sheet that indicated that so if, if a pool does not come back negative, that they can retest using the same samples to figure out which of the samples is the one, that's not in this.
Not in this case.
Not in this one.
May be true elsewhere, but from what they explained, that was not possible, that, and and the the company itself that is doing the pool testing does not offer the next level testing. That is something we have to do on our own, which is what Chrissy was talking about with the Binax Now.
It's also really important to know that if uh, someone in the pool tests positive, the entire group will need to quarantine until we find out who that person is. Um, and then we would have to do contact tracing. So if there is a class that they're all pulled together, one person, you know, there is a positive test or multiple positive tests, they would have to be out and do um, virtual learning and a remote learning, I should say, until it's determined who the positive, where where the positive case is. And um, and then we would do the contact tracing as well.
And again, that is, you know, even for an entire elementary school class to be out for two weeks, remote learning while they are getting tested. they are getting tested, that's clearly disruptive. Uh however, at at the high school level where you don't have one class, students are in one class and then they move to their next class and they all separate and go elsewhere. So it is extremely disruptive. It's also i- is included with all activities. So students couldn't participate in sports, they couldn't participate in any school events, they can't participate in anything in the community. They're, they are truly on a quarantine in their home um until they cert- serve that quarantine, if you will. Um and um now arguably, it's very important to know who's positive and we're certainly not dismissive of the test. We just wanna make sure that people understand. This isn't, you know, you get a test, you walk out the door, you're all set. Um other people can be affected by this. If there is one person in a pool of thirty who is positive, it is going to affect twenty-nine other people. We just think it's very important for people to understand that that is part of this process.
Jackie?
Sorry, Jen, did you have something else?
I just, one more follow-up, yeah. So then, so clearing the quarantine, i- if if a pool comes back. So I know you mentioned using the the binax now. Would the intent there be to try to quickly identify uh who the positive could possibly be and then have them do a PCR? Does everybody need to do a PCR? Are they subject to the same? You know, kinda get out of jail card for quarantine as they are now, which is, you know, the test PCR on the fifth day and then wait another three days if you're negative and all that. Like how does, could we get into a little bit about how that would?
That was, that was one of the things that that the Dr. Brown from the Department of Public Health actually brought up. She said that the the binax now is actually more effective, it it the the percentage of of um the percentage of of accuracy is higher with adults than it is with kids. However, it's still producing a high percentage of accuracy, higher than any of the other antigen um tests right now. So that's why they're sticking with the with the Abbott binax now. But she's, she did point out that there could be false negatives and false positives with it. But very similar to some PCRs as well. Um so a- as the PCR test, but but it is, it is something that that is, that is possible.
It isn't foolproof.
Right.
All set, Jen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Jackie?
Okay, thank you. So I just, I I'm trying to, I guess, wrap my head around how this would work. Do you mind if I just kinda walk through and you can help me understand this. So and I'm, I'm looking at the elementary level, um because I know you said, I think you said in the upper grades, they can the kids can maybe give it to themselves, but I'm guessing at the elementary level, that's not so?
They, they have done this with students as young as first grade.
Okay.
Uh being supervised. Um but again, it's having staff to supervise.
Right.
A classroom and have however many students um perform the test, collect the samples.
Mm-hmm.
So on.
Alright, so.
Superintendent in Medford, um she actually shared how it's almost like a rolling cart that the nurses roll down the hallway and the students come out one at a time and they just, it, she said it literally takes five minutes.
Okay.
It's for the entire class to be tested.
So for, for example, at, say at RO, there's what, uh thirty-four, thirty-five classes there, something like that with two cohorts. So you would have to, somebody would have to be doing seventy, seventy tests a week. They would do each cohort, obviously, when they're there. So you, somebody would be going into each classroom twice a week to do each separate cohort every week. So you'd have to do all of that each week and then they would collect the samples, package the samples, send them out, and then are they entering all the data in the database too? And kinda tracking what comes back when and who said what and all of that stuff?
Yes, they are responsible for um getting the information from the tests and finding out who or working with people with the results of the test.
Yeah, the 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 company actually sends the results, so it will say which pool has positives and which
Okay.
negatives. So within that pool, it is identified which students or or staff members would be in a certain pool. So then.
No, go ahead. So and so then, once, so some pool can't save uh five pools come back with a positive. Then are you doing the contact tracing for all of those pools before you confirm who is actually positive? How is that working?
So the next step, once the pool comes back positive, the next step would be that each person in that pool would then take the app, the binax now. And what they're saying, what they said in the in the webinar is that it, they've had a high accuracy rate of of who of testing the asymptomatic kids that that are actually positive um using the binax now. So they're hoping that that would um be the measure. However, if a pool comes back and it's positive and everyone tests negative within a pool, which they said could happen, then yes, every student would have to go get a PCR test. And we would not provide that PCR test. That PC, every family would be responsible for finding a PCR test for their child.
But in terms of the contact tracing, are you doing that only after the binax text? Or do you have to do it once that pool comes back with those thirty people and you're assuming, and then you're going out and you're doing the contact tracing for those thirty kids or plus staff members, whomever?
Right, cuz we have no idea which person or persons in the pool is positive, exactly.
Cuz I'm just trying to think, I know right now we have not a lot of people doing the contact trace and I'm just concerned about who's, who's gonna do all of that.
Well, that's why I'm saying we, we can't, we cannot assume this at this time. We would have to hire staff, which is why this is a non-starter if we don't have the funds. Once we find out what we're getting for Essar.
Okay.
It's not gonna happen at all because we can't afford it. But if we find we do have enough money to do this, that's why we keep investigating this further and further so that if we find we are able to afford hiring temporary staff to do all of that cuz we can't do any of that, um then we would need to make a decision at that point.
Alright, thank you. That's helpful.
Jen?
Sound, it sounds great in theory, but it's very complicated.
So what we're talking about um about additional stim, additional, additional stimulus, is that from are we talking about what Congress recently passed and we don't know what's coming from that? Or is this an expectation that when the new administration is in, that there's an additional?
No, no, there is money coming. We just have no idea what it is.
Okay.
Jackie?
Um so if a student is part of a pool that tests positive, can that student go out, get their own PCR test to prove they're negative and come back without having a quarantine? Or do they automatically have to quarantine as part of the pool?
Do you understand what I'm saying? I think we would have to determine that on a case-by-case basis, depending on grade level and what the situation is. I think if there's a pool test at the high school, it's very different than a pool test, you know, a a a pool of students at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Jen?
Sorry, full of questions today.
No, that's great.
For the, for the districts that um that you've heard from or read about that have implemented this, have they found are there particular grade levels that they've targeted for this? Or if they've done it across, have they found it particularly helpful or not helpful based on grades?
So the the districts that presented, um these three districts, it was Medford, Watertown and Salem. They are testing all their staff and students. Some of them have done so from the beginning. Um in Watertown, for example, in October, they started testing their whole staff using individual PCR tests. I don't know how that was funded or, oh, actually, I do, actually. They said that their their town provided the funding for that. Um and Salem, uh what did Salem do? Um I, I, I'll have to look back. But some, one of the districts is actually testing everybody twice a week.
Oh, wow.
So, so that's, but one of, one of the districts, uh Salem went from sixty-five percent of students in to now eighty-five percent of their students in due to the testing. In person.
Okay, and they're, and it's, it's they were testing, they're all testing at all levels?
Yes. And and the, so they said that the administration is very easy. They test in Salem, they test on Thursdays, they send out on Fridays. And then on Saturday evening or Sunday morning, they get the results and they start their next phase um if need be. Their, their percentage rate also is extremely low in comparison to the towns. So in in all three cases, their percentage of their, their percentage of positive cases.
Okay. Caroline, I saw her hand earlier. Do you, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I, um actually Chrissy just um almost answered it um in a way. I was looking at the infection rates and wondering how that would impact just generally this pool testing um in in any circumstance. Because, you know, when you look back, for example, in July, we were, we were at two hundred and eighty-seven new cases. Uh yesterday, we had not five thousand nine hundred and eighteen new cases in Massachusetts. So I'm just wondering as these cases climb and we sort of anticipate sadly that they will continue to do so probably well into February. Uh combination of new variants and inadequate um adherence to protocols and a slow vaccine rollout. Um I'm just wondering if it it won't happen that you'll have, in pool testing generally, not talking about Easton. Um you might not start to have more, you know, positives here and there in each pool, which would then become very complicated and expensive to, you know, kind of address all of those positives. I mean, it just seems like this um this coronavirus is the it it's just such a mess and every time you think you have a handle on part of it, it seems like it becomes more complicated. So I, I'm not, um but of course, the largest issue for us is that we simply don't have the staff to um e- even if the tests are relatively inexpensive. I'm astounded that a town could um fund that level of testing every week. Um I mean, that they, I guess Watertown is a wealthier community, but that's still pretty stunning. Because that is, it would amount to a ton of money. So um it's, it's unfortunate. I was very excited when I saw the uh news conference about the pool testing. And I still actually am not clear. I had thought, based on what um Governor Baker said, that the first six weeks was free, everything was free, that they were providing the support that would do the actual testing, the packaging, the everything. And my question had been at the time, I knew that then the districts were expected to assume the expense. But I wondered if even doing it for six weeks, if it were in fact free, would, would be something. You know, could we just discontinue it then? Because obviously we wouldn't have the funding unless, as Alicia mentioned, we do turn out to get some um sufficient funding from the new uh stimulus package. But um so did I misunderstand his at his press conference? Because when I was speaking to someone before, they said that you'd still have to provide the staff to administer.
So what was really interesting is when he said everything was free, then we get on the call with Russell Johnson, who's one of the senior leaders at DESI and he said, "Well, we can help you fund if you need staff."
Okay, cuz it, he did say everything was free and I thought, did I mishear that? Because I subsequently, I actually asked Jackie and she said, "No, I don't think it is free. I think we'd still have to provide a lot of the, you know, costs, um funding rather, for for the administration." So so it's not all free then. See, it he really did make it sound like this was just a gift for six weeks and I thought, why not? But um, well, sad to hear that.
Uh Michelle, go ahead.
So even if a family or children in this class decide that they don't wanna be part of this, the kids that do do it, if somebody's positive, it still affects everybody. Because you don't know who that person is or people are and how close they were to anybody. So not doing it doesn't really save you the the aggravation.
Until everyone has subsequent testing, no.
So as, as an educator.
Much more complicated than it was um presented to be.
Right.
As an educator, I want to be able to say, wow, this is a really awesome idea. But I can also see you in, so one of our arguments for not going to three feet was how many more families would be affected by a positive case?
Mm-hmm.
And now you're just making it basically entire classes.
Correct.
That are going to be, they're affected, daycare works affected.
Yeah.
Um you know, tho- those are huge hardships. And then the, and then if they have to get PRC testing, those, that's not cheap and not, insurance doesn't always cover that. Like, it just seems to me like it's a bigger can of worms where if somebody's sick, we send them home and we deal with them as as it happens. It it doesn't, I don't know. I can just see that that becoming like a nightmare.
And it 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 may, you know, we, we are a different district than everybody else. Um you can see we're different in in what we can fund and what we can't, but we're also different in our protocols. And one thing that we have determined, we've had hundreds of students identified as close contacts, right? You have a high school student, they're in six, seven classes. Um we identify all the students around them, we identify who was on the bus with them, we identify if they're on a sports team with someone, if they were in the car, going to school with somebody. There could be thirty students that are close contacts to one positive case. We have not yet had one of our close contacts that we identified as a close contact by being near a positive case subsequently test positive. So what that's telling us at this point is that our protocols and procedures are working. Our one-way hallways, our masking, our six-foot distancing, our um cleaning protocols, our disinfection, our hand washing. All of those things are making it so that even though you may have a positive student sitting in the center of a classroom, those that are identified as being the closest to that person have not yet contracted it in school from the the student identified or the staff member identified. So it's, it may be more advantageous for a school that doesn't maybe have some of those protocols or has three-foot distancing and does have more spread in their schools. That is possible. And so it's very difficult to to make comparisons. You know, I I try to ask people often, please be, you know, understand that just because X, Y, Z, Q, you know, Q school is doing X, Y, Z and Q, doesn't mean that it works for Easton. Because there's just a situ, a different situations everywhere.
Um would the, would these, so if you did bring this in and you were talking about twenty to thirty thousand for each test period, how long is a test period?
A week.
One week. So after six weeks, and you said that was only, it's free. Well, but um you talked about the.
Are available to us for free, but not the staff.
To, okay.
They, they would, they would help support funding for staff to administer the the tests and to um to send it out to the, to the labs, but that would only be for six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
But then what's the?
People responsible for the um consent of four thousand people for um keeping track of negative cases, keeping track of subsequent testing that has to take place, clearing people to come back to school, um et cetera.
Right. That's, that's a, like one, what you said, one of the towns kinda made their own department to do all this. Because even right now, we have, you know, I hear from people that are kind of upset, well, they are upset about not, you know, that whole tracing thing. And uh we had talked about another town that uh we haven't, but um another town that, or other towns. And like you said, you know, every town is different. We all have different protocols, we all have different ways of doing this. But people, you know, staff and families need to know what is going on. Like, are they in trouble or are they, you know, close to getting infected or something? Alright, so a test period. Alright, so a test period is a week and it's twenty to thirty thousand after that, alright.
So if I, if I can just, if I can just.
Understand this, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I can just give like an example, so say we use the Salem's example of testing on a Thursday. So I'm in a class, I t- I test on, on Thursday, the results gets, gets sent out on Friday. I find out on Saturday night or Sunday morning, the school finds out Saturday night or Sunday morning that my pool is positive. So then, the whole class would have to be remote on Monday at the very minimum to find out while we're doing the Abix Bin, the, the Abbott Binax Now tests.
Which, which we would have to buy all the Binax Now tests as well, that's not included in that.
That is not included. And, um, they, they would administer on Monday, the Binax Nows. We find out the, the infected, um, students or staff member. And the next day, or, or that day, we would have to determine because the Binax Now comes back within forty-five minutes or, you know, even less than that. So then we would have to contact trace, so say I'm the positive person, we would have to look, do the contact tracing within that day in order to find out who can come back to school on Tuesday. So not the whole school, not the whole class would have to quarantine, and if we could contact trace that quickly. So that's a lot of, um, manpower that is put into that one class that has a positive pool.
But then you'd need to, you'd need to do it that Monday for the next cohort, because that cohort that's in on Thursday isn't the cohort that's in on Monday.
Right, correct.
Do it again for that cohort on Monday.
Yes, and this is one class, this is not the hundreds that we have across the district. Um, and it's also worth noting that when we did discuss this with the nurses in the Board of Health, they were not supportive of using the antigen test.
Right.
Even the enhanced antigen test to determine if a student was positive, because they do have false positives and negatives. The PCR is currently the gold standard for, um, for testing.
That's correct, that's something that was brought up today when speaking with our, with, with nurses that, um, we in Easton haven't fully bought into the Binax Now yet, um, because of the data that it is showing. And that's, that's with our Board of Health as well.
Jen?
So Chrissy, going back to your example on, of a Thursday, submit Friday, come back Saturday. When you need to test on Monday, those kids are at home.
Correct, so they would have to come in.
Okay.
For the testing.
So now, so now we're relying on parents being able to arrange for transportation.
Yep.
Oh boy.
So my, so my son who does go to school on a Thursday.
Yeah.
On Monday, I would have to be out to, um, to drive him through the drive-through to get the Binax Now. Because he can't drive himself.
Right, yep, yeah, same here, yep.
And then, with, so with any kind of testing, whether it's the PCR or the, um, Binax. Is this mandatory? Does, if you get to a classroom, let's say you get into a second grade classroom and the nurse is there to take the test or whatever. I mean, is it mandatory? Do, do parents have to say yes, this test can be given or no, it can or whatever?
They have to give consent and all of those forms need to be collected before testing starts.
So that's, so, and that was brought up before, alright. So again, when you were saying about, you know, prepare, give, mail, uh, then record. There's a lot of bookkeeping with this and, and as you've stated about eighty-two times, we don't have enough people. Never mind enough money, but it's important to, I don't know, get a, a handle on, I, I know schools right now on a spreader, right? Am I, am I right there? Schools on spreading the virus.
We are, we're not seeing that in our school, I can't speak for other schools.
No, I'm just talking about.
So they may, but in our school, we have not seen it yet.
Okay, alright.
I will point out that, you know, what, going to Michelle's point about being an educator, you want to think that it's, it's a good idea. And there's nothing more, I think, than a teacher would want than knowing walking into their class that there's not one kid in there that is positive. I think that would be a huge relief. However, then you counteract with what the actual procedure would be and the implications that if somebody does test positive. So I think it's really important to weigh both scenarios.
And it doesn't mean just be, you know, if a, if a student takes the test, it doesn't mean they're not subsequently positive later in that week.
Right.
It does not mean that. The test does not keep them negative until the next test.
Alright, uh, Jen, go ahead.
Okay, I think this is probably my last question, so. Uh, Chrissy, I know you said they were looking for this one, the sample sizes would be ten to twenty-five. Um, so I know that, you know, especially recently with so many kids quarantined for various reasons, that there are often classes which in the hybrid setting have fewer than ten students showing up in person. So in that instance, can we submit a sample for just that classroom, even though it might be only six or eight students? Or would we have to combine samples with another class, potentially doubling the number of students and families impacted if that pool came back positive?
I don't know the answer to that question, um.
I do know that you have to pay by the tube.
It's fi- it's, so when we do, when we would absorb the cost.
Number of swabs you have and the more tubes you have, the more expensive it is. We priced it out, the, the third iteration of this, we priced out the twenty-five thousand dollar estimate at about twenty-five swabs per tube. So you do less than that and it, it increases, it's a hundred and some, a hundred and something per tube.
But in the elementary schools, you're not gonna have, unless you.
Put the classes together.
Unless you put the classes together, like cohort A for three third grade classes. So it would affect, okay, alright.
They did share that the, the statewide contract, they're looking at an approximate cost of five dollars a swab as a minimum. That's what they shared.
And so with four thousand s- staff members, there's your twenty thousand, plus you need a person that is going to do, a person, we're gonna need eight people to keep track of positives, negatives, who's going, who's coming, you know, just that whole thing. It, again, it's a COVID nightmare that we've been dealing with.
It's ridiculous, we need a better option.
Oh my gosh, Jen?
One more question, would there.
You can have as many questions.
I know, I know, I just, I just know this discussion's going very long and we have a lot of other things to cover, so, but it's important, obviously.
This is important.
Any, um, what would the, ha- have we considered the pros and cons of what if we just taught? What if we just tested staff, would that be an instance where the risk of, again, because it's pooled testing of having far too many staff implicated by a single positive is, is.
Exactly right, we would not be able to open the schools if we had one or more. If we had more than one pool that was positive, that would definitely shut us down. One, depending on where it is. Um, one pool at Moreau is the entire staff.
Right.
For example.
Right.
Alright. Um, alright, anyone else? I know Chrissy, you got, you have some questions coming in about this.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just not sure, are they, are they repeats of what we've already asked or?
So I think we, there wasn't a to- yeah, I think we've answered a lot of them.
I think right now, everybody's head is spinning.
Right, I, I will just share, Erica Mandel, fifty Main Street says, "I was curious if this is something you would create and send a survey to families for, if a lot of parents aren't interested in signing permission for their children to be tested, it wouldn't be worth all the money and time spent."
I appreciate that question, but that's a very difficult thing to put on a survey, because if you're saying, would you have your child tested and they haven't participated in this conversation? That they're not, they're li- missing out on a lot of details that, you know, just think of all the things that we discussed and what it actually means. It's not the test that you get at CVS or at a drive-through service or at your doctor's office. It is very different and it's, it would be almost impossible to put all of that information in a narrative form on a survey. I think that might be challenging.
But going along with that, so, for example, you don't want your kid to get tested, but yet when that pool, cohort A pool comes back positive. Then, and that little kid that didn't take the test, they're still part of this, they're gonna be going home, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, alright.
Because they could. We don't know if, we don't know if the positive student was sitting right next to them or not, we have no idea.
Exactly, exactly.
So I do think that we, that we answered all the questions that were asked, however, I do urge anyone out there. If you don't think a question was answered, please ask it again and I can read it during the public comment.
Public comment, yes, that's what I was just gonna suggest, thank you Chrissy, okay. Alright, so, we'll keep that on our radar and hope for the best, alright. Um, next, discussion of superintendent's goals.
Hey, Chrissy is going to actually share this, I emailed this to you, I don't know if you want to have a copy in front of you to write on or to look at while you have this, but, um, this, this document, you know, the, the Department of Education has not, last year, the Department of Education, when we closed schools in March, relaxed the requirements for educator evaluation. They're not doing that this year, and so all of our educators, including myself of course, are, um, following the process. This is a little bit different because I would have typically shown you this before now. Uh, however, we were really packed with our, uh, COVID information at every school committee meeting. Um, and a lot of these you will see are in development, we've been working on them, because of course, these have been the goals since the beginning of the year. But they're, I, I just want to explain briefly what some of the things are, because they're a little different than what I might typically write as goals. So the, all four of the strands, um, a- all four of the standards, excuse me, and the requirements for superintendents are uh, represented here. And all of the strategic objectives of the district are represented here. And so that's what will be in the do- in the gray, um, section, if you want to take a look at that. You don't have to accept these tonight, you can look them over and we can talk about it at our next meeting. Um, the first one is under instructional leadership and it, it has to do with curriculum and instruction. Typically, again, there's gonna be some things like this that are, I don't typically do, I, I don't combine indicators typically. However, you are aware that we had to really do major adaptations to curriculum and instruction this year. And so the, the goal is to make sure that it is still, it still operates under high expectations, that students are engaged, high level of performance, the expectations stay high and that we're still working towards standard-based achievements. And so, um, and so that's what the goal indicates, all principals will ensure staff have the tools, resources and support to adapt our curriculum and instruction to appropriately meet the needs of all learners in a structurally different learning model. Administrators will set and model high expectations for student engagement, performance, expectations and progress towards standards-based achievements. Um, I've outlined the key actions that will take place, some of them are still in development before the end of the year. The benchmarks or early indicators of success that you would see. And then that ends with, um, measures of success or what you should be able to see. Um, if this is, if this is successful. Um, I won't read through these, but certainly please do and let me know if you have, um, issues or, uh, suggestions on any of them, and again, you don't have to do that this meeting. I've used the same format that I've used in past years, where I show what tasks are completed eventually in my report, um, to the school committee. And for the benchmarks, I give concrete evidence of, uh, what those benchmarks are and if they've been realized. So, one of the things, uh, I didn't want to do and I encourage the administrated, administration and, and staff not to do is create goals for perfecting a system that we're never gonna use again. And so that is not, uh, the direction of this. That is why the direction is more maintaining our focus on high expectations, performance and meeting standards, as opposed to, um, creating a perfect remote or hybrid system. Because that is not, that's not our goal, that's not what we're try- what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to meet these goals and expectations in a new environment. Any questions about goal one? Okay, uh, goal two is a le- a student learning standard. Develop a di- district operational system and processes that effectively ensure, excuse me, ensure the safety of all students and staff while providing a challenging, engaging and nurturing learning environment. So we did need to do a thorough assessment of all facilities, protocols and procedures. And again, we're hoping to take these forward with us post-COVID um, to provide, um, learning environments that are, even in the most, uh, extraneous circumstances, in the most tense environments, students and staff feel safe. Students and staff feel nurtured, students and staff feel as though this is, um, still a rigorous, challenging environment in which to learn. Again, I have the, the key actions and benchmarks, um, as well as the measures of success that you should see at the end of this, um, evaluation period. Are there any questions about goal two? Okay, goal three is, uh, under the, under the, uh, standard of district improvement. Despite the fact that, you know, we are in a new learning environment and we are really just trying to get through this year uh, physically and emotionally and every other way. Uh, we do have some major areas of focus that we cannot let drop, even in the midst of a pandemic. And one of them is to establish strategic partnerships with community organizations, businesses and families that focus on strengthening or expanding their role and maximizing their participation in authentic learning experiences for students and maximizing their involvement in our district effectiveness. And so one of the areas that I have remained focused on is bringing in partners for, um, predominantly, predominantly to foster college and career readiness for our students. So we are working at the high school on some pathways for students. Making them better informed about what is required in a particular, um, career pathway or, uh, college expectation. Um, creating opportunities for entering college sooner or earning college credits sooner. And, um, working in specifically on things like chapter seventy-four programs. You know that last year, we talked about adding a childcare program. Um, and so I am working with Chrissy and the leadership team at the high school on other opportunities for students to, uh, realize their, uh, potential for particular careers by having some real-life, authentic experience. This also includes staff members, so that they can have authentic contemporary applications of knowledge. Um, you know, when was the last time one of our science teachers worked in a functioning professional laboratory, for example? Or, um, mathematics, working with, um, a mathemati- mathematician on a, a, a real-world application? And so we are looking for these opportunities, so I have been working on, uh, these partnerships that we're bringing to staff and students, um, in the, in the coming years. So that has remained one of my key focus areas. Goal number four is, uh, communications. Communication became, um, absolutely critical more than ever when you are in a situation such as we find ourselves, so. My goal this year has been to create an effective, timely, informative series of two-way communication tools and resources. Uh, we still continue to create them today to suit the needs and purposes of the community as they give us feedback. Um, we, we have been talking, uh, about a dashboard, we. Um, we, we have been talking uh, about a dashboard. We've been changing that as we have um, progressed throughout the year and we are working on a new template for a dashboard. So in addition to our school reopening plan, our pro- protocols, our procedures, our uh, playbook. Um, different forms of communication, but the two-way is essential, making sure that we're able to hear the concerns of um, our stakeholders and be able to respond to them in a timely fashion. We're in a constantly evolving situation and it makes that communication more important than ever. And finally, goal five, as I said, we are maintaining laser focus on a couple of areas and one of them is our cultural proficiency and our focus on social justice and equity. So to understand and develop and implement cul- culturally responsive practices, policies, empower educators to build culturally responsive, responsive learning environments and partner with community members to create a culture that accepts and affirms individual differences. Um, we realize that we are in a, a very challenging situation with the covid pandemic. However, we began this road of real deep um, self-reflection on our district and on our resources and on our tools and our behaviors and our instructional practices. And I was very, uh, uh, very pleased and proud and certainly not surprised that the staff, despite the many challenges they're facing this year, wished to really maintain their focus in this area. And so we have been working with outside partners on this. We continue to work um, on professional development and um, gathering meaningful data to help us make our decisions on this. And um, participating with um, some service providers that really have brought some um, some quality professional development and opportunities to our staff this year. So we're, we're excited to continue that endeavor. We have a long way to go, certainly. But we have decided and um, been very purposeful about not dropping that as one of our major areas of focus this year. And that, those are my five goals.
Anyone have any comments or questions? That when you were talking about like the childcare, you were also talking about um, like the industrial arts department there. That chap, that would be chapter seventy-four, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and make, making sure that we're maintaining a focus, you know, if you're talking about industrial arts, for example. Um, you know, what is our future focus and vision going to be? What are, wha- what is the uh, eh, the demands in our, you know, regionally, our economic demand? Um, what are the industries that are in most need of um, expertise and what is that expertise? So even industrial arts, you know, focusing on um, renewable energy and um, you know, recycling and building windmills and, and that kind of a focus. So we are um, fine-tuning our programs and um, bringing them up to date. That is something that is really only possible with strong community partners, which is why the goals really fit nicely together. Um, we are working now to try to secure some college and university partners, some industry partners, um, some corporate sponsors. And uh, it's, it's really a group effort because we, we really need to um, not focus on getting students ready for college or for the next four years, but really getting them ready for a robust workforce. And what is that workforce going to be ten years from now?
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have any questions or anything for Dr. Cabral? Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, next, vote to approve District Student Opportunity Act Plan. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so you'll remember that we, the, the Commonwealth, um, the legislature voted on the Student Opportunity Act, which eh, the intention was to infuse um, supportive dollars into school districts to provide equity and education. Easton did not realize um, any actual dollars from that. However, every district in the Commonwealth is required to complete a Student Opportunity Act Report and explain how we will use said money. So we are going to, uh, Chrissy is going to present to you um, what programs we have identified as our goals going forward, even though we have no money going to them. And the school committee needs to approve this report for submission to the Department of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. So I, I'm chuckling here because when, you know, when this came about, the Student Opportunity Act, it was, we were all very excited to think that they were, they were going to be um, changing the formula for chapter seventy and what we receive. Uh, unfortunately, this is not, it is the case, but it is, it does not um, support Easton in any way. We are actually receiving zero funding, additional funding through the Student Opportunity Act. Thirty-seven districts are getting eighty percent of the funds. So those districts are what we are finding to be our larger urban districts. Um, those that with high poverty rates. Um, so the, again, it's thirty-seven districts out of two hundred some odd districts. So those, anyone that is receiving larger funds has to submit a long, a, a long, long form. Thankfully, we only had to submit a short form. They identified indicators that were crucial to um, to they, they shared with us indicators that we needed to um, show evidence of supporting uh, for this earmarked Student Opportunity Act. Um, thankfully, we are all, we have already identified early literacy as um, something that we need to focus on in the Eastern Public Schools. Through our unit writing, we have identified a need for stronger implementation of a phonics program, a word study program. Um, many of our teachers are already implementing the use of foundations. However, however, we wanted to make that a common tool that all um, classrooms, kindergarten through third grade wo- would be implementing. This has been on our, our agenda to implement for a couple of years now, but because of covid, it was stalled. So um, when we submitted the, when we, when we wrote the plan, um, it was easy for us to say that this is what we're doing to focus on this one indicator. Um, and that you'll see there, the, it, like I said, like we said before, it's no additional money. We just had to show it within our budget, how we are focusing on that. So for example, you'll see the materials, um, a price for the materials that we will be allocating. Um, which has already been built into, into the budget and we also have some um, funding through Title I that we would be allocating for that. Uh, reading interventionists, we have two reading interventionists cur- currently at the PK to two level. So their positions are, what we're saying um, is in support of this indicator and our reading specialists as well. So again, this isn't, this isn't putting positions into a grant by any means. It's just proving to Desi how we are already supporting the indicator that they've identified. So um, so that's, that's what this plan shows. And um, if you wouldn't mind just voting your approval, then we can wrap it up with a bow and and send it on its way.
Any questions for Chrissy? Jen?
No questions. I just appreciate you spending the time that you don't have on an exercise that is pretty much ridiculous that they asked us to do with the money they're not giving us, but appreciate your diligence in getting it done. This is so absurd. Okay, that's it.
Alright, so um. We need, okay, so I'm just gonna say, I don't have to make a motion. We just have to vote on it, right?
Vote to accept it, yes.
Alright, so all those in favor of the Student Opportunity Plan?
Nancy, I think you do have to make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that the school committee accepts the Student Opportunity Plan as uh, given to us by Chrissy Pruitt. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, thank you. And thank you Chrissy for doing that. Alright, good luck. Alright, January first enrollment, Dr. Cabral.
Annually, we provide you with this analysis of enrollment. So you will see that it includes the enrollment of every grade uh, in every school. Um, including our outplace students and those with uh, those that are high s- uh, homeschooled, excuse me. From January nineteen, twenty, and now January twenty, twenty-one. Um, obviously, our kindergarten and pre-kindergarten numbers are lower. That is a direct result of covid. We had preregistrations that were much higher, but those are not compulsory in Massachusetts and many parents decided to keep their children home or, or have an alternative uh, programming for their kids. Um, other than that, um, as I usually suggest, I would say that you take the uh, the number in January twenty, twenty and then just follow that diagonally down one column to the next year and it shows you if we added or lost any students. In that particular grade, if you wish to look at it that way as a cohort, instead of by grade. This is for your review and for your information unless you have any questions for us.
Does anyone have any questions on the enrollment? Alright, thank you very much. Budget updates, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. Marilyn Gordon is here and uh, we have these scheduled updates throughout the school year. This one is scheduled to be uh, an update of the current school budget to date. It's a very unusual year, as you can imagine. We have no idea what to expect for the rest of the year, but we do have um, the current status of the budget for you, uh, as well as, um, she is going to speak very briefly about um, the outlook of the rollover to FY uh, twenty-two. Marilyn?
Hi. Long meeting. Um, okay, so this is the same for, this um, update on the twenty, twenty-one budget is um, being presented in the same format that I presented in last year where I separate out the salaries from the expenses. Um, so the, and I have um, I've put notes next to, eh, eh, there, it's all listed by state code. And I have um, put little notes next to it, next to each line. Um, just to give you like eh, a hint onto either what the money's used for, why there might be a balance left in there. Um. You know, why something might look unusual. So um, I can take any questions that you had, I don't, you wanna just go through the salaries first and then we can go through the expenses. I'll just say, the expenses, it's a kind of, the, the salaries we encumber right at the beginning of the year for the whole entire year. So you pretty much know, except for a few things like substitutes, overtime, but you know, those kind of things. But other than that, the salaries are pretty much known right from the, right from September first. Um, on the expense side, it just, I ju- just giving you like what we've encumbered up to date. And you know, every day we get more encumbrances. So you just kind of assume that the departments are watching their own funds and um, that.
Those will be expended by the end of the year.
Right. Other than some crazy things like the buses, which Leisha's mentioned, um, where's, we have some crazy things going on with, you know, not using as many buses this year because of the Wednesdays and the ten day, the ten days at the beginning of the year. Um. And we do, on the salary side, we do have some unpaid leave of absences that I've noted. Open for questions.
Does anyone have any questions on salaries for Marilyn? Go ahead, Jen.
So where we have the um, where we have the positive projected balances due to unpaid leaves, leaves of absence. Are those services being covered by existing staff or not at all, or by substitutes?
By substitutes which um, make less money typically, of course, than a, than a staff member. Um, and we also had um, a few staff members due to medical compromise or otherwise elected to take um, an unpaid leave of absence and those positions are filled by long-term substitutes. However, like I said, we don't know uh, how many substitutes. Is the number of substitutes going to increase? Are we going to have unanticipated expenses? Are we gonna need more staff for certain? Um, for certain roles? Are we gonna need to increase nursing or custodians? We, those things, we don't know yet.
Thank you.
There has been, like, we have the overtime. Most of the overtime that the custodians are doing right now is covid-related and has been charged to the cares. They really haven't done much overtime in the school because there haven't been any functions or school-related function kind of type thing. So that's, that's, that's obviously down. And then the nurses, um, we haven't had like regular nurse subs. We've just had the covid nurse subs and the nur- those, those nurse subs are being charged to the cares money also.
Any other questions?
But that money's gone now, right?
That's what I was gonna ask. Yeah, so do, same question, yeah.
The, the town's cares, that was, um, they voted to extend that. Um, I think it's just till the end of June. But um, there's still money. I, I'm not sure how much is left in that money because it is shared with all the other departments.
Right, it's for the whole town. It's not this, it's not school department money. So as we need items, we um, forward that to the town. Um, but other departments are doing that at the same time. So we try to stay abreast of what's in it, but it's certainly difficult to plan ahead for things that you might need because another department have, may have a need that comes before ours. Uh, so it's You can't really put things into the budget for that.
So when we say that the, they extended the cares money, that's not at the federal or state level, right? That was the town doing that vote at the town meeting to set aside some extra funds to cover, or is that literally cares? Cares was extended.
Extended cares. They didn't add anything to it, but they eh, allowed the extension of it.
Okay, got it.
And there's FEMA reimbursement coming for some of the expenses. There's no longer gonna be any FEMA reimbursement going forward, but for some of that stuff that we did spend over the summer. Um, depending on what it is, uh, so that makes, that just extends how much money we got to go a little further.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Marilyn, uh, forty-one, twenty. Is that, is that a salary?
No, 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 no. There's no, there's no, there's nothing in that line.
I know, what it, but what it's.
That's uh, because I just listed all of the state codes on both the salary side and on the expense side.
Oh, okay.
So there is obviously no salaries in that, but it's on, on the expense side.
Okay, um, anything else on salaries? Okay, go ahead Jackie.
So it looks like there's a lot of the, the percentage of what was encumbered for subs is still there. Is that because we just haven't been able to find them or how, why is that?
Uh, both. One is because we've been using um, federal stimulus money for it and the other is because we just don't have them. There was one day last week, I think, we had maybe forty absences or thereabouts and we had nine substitutes in the district. So.
It was also the ten days at the beginning of the year, ten less days. And there's also the Wednesdays that were.
They don't, hold on, they don't know what that means. So yeah, there was, yeah. You gotta explain each thing.
But alright, so alright, I, this is off track a little bit, but when you said you had forty absences and nine subs, what happens to the classes that now don't have? Like, how do you handle that?
We have um, we've have had some staff working remotely. So if a, if a staff member is home due to a quarantine, for example, they work remotely and we have a facilitator go from room to room and facilitate classes as they're happening with students. Or we have um, uh, paraprofessionals cover for a teacher. Or we have had um, clerical going, clerical aides have been going in and facilitating classes. Um, principals have been substituting in classrooms, uh, whatever we can do. Principals have been substituting in classrooms, whatever we can do.
Okay, and then let's jump over to expenses, I'm sorry, yeah, expenses, please. Marilyn, do you have anything to tell us on that?
I guess the only, the things that stick out here to me are obviously the transportation, which we're still in negotiations with our regular transportation thing and the special ed transportation. Most of special ed over the summer was remote, so there was not that many vans that we used over the summer, so that, that was down. And, and then also the, the, the twenty-four-ten texts, textbooks, because there's also a district-wide curriculum amount in there, but a lot of the curriculum that we've been buying this year has been COVID-related and has been charged to all these grants that we're getting, so.
We've had a lot of online textbooks, online programs, things that we needed stat because of COVID, and so it counted as a COVID-related expense.
Right, so we haven't spent that.
So, okay, and the, so the Chromebooks wouldn't be on here because that was a grant, right?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And then the, the tuition to collaborative, so line ninety-four hundred.
Well, right, so there's always, because we use Circuit Breaker money for the tuitions, I mean, I guess we probably should do the, the private day schools, the residential schools and the collaboratives. You have to separate those out for state reporting, how much we spend on each one of those lines, but every year, I try to get that right every year, how much to put in each, each of those three lines, but because we end up using some money for Circuit Breaker, and we're like, and we make those last-minute decisions on, okay, this is the one we're going to charge to Circuit Breaker, this, so it, it never, the pluses and minuses work out.
Okay. Yeah, so that's kind, so that's offset then mostly by line, the line of it.
By the private day schools, right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
The student's going somewhere, right? So it's just we, and sometimes the placement changes for the student as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Marilyn, thank you very much.
Okay, and then the, just on the, quickly on the tw, on the twenty twenty-two, this year, normally we would do the complete rollover and you'd have your complete picture, but right now, where, you know, this is a negotiating year because none of our unions have contracts for next year. But we're working on that, and we did, we did have that meeting with the finance committee and the selectmen where we did do some projection, which you guys did get the projections of the, what the steps would look like and what one percent would look like.
An executive session.
So, once we get that nailed down, then once we kind of get a better handle on where, where we are with the salaries, which as you know, is eighty percent of our budget anyway, then we can, which hopefully will be relatively soon, we can give you guys some, a good projection on what, what we can, what next year's complete budget will look like.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. District updates. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, thanks. So I think sort of embedded in my goals and in our prior conversations, I've talked about a lot of the things that we're working on. One thing I will just discuss briefly is that we have had a lot of questions about our dashboard and requests to do that differently. We are working on that and we are discussing that with our stakeholders, our staff, our teachers, and so we did have a great meeting with our union leaders. We're getting feedback from, from all of them on what is, what is the best information. There are lots of dashboards out there, right? So we have to pick a one, we have to pick one. So we are working on that right now. We'll have that out once that is completed. We do have an update from this week on our the dashboard that we do have on our district website. We did have, as I said, thirty cases last week. Again, we, we feel strongly, and, and I know it's a direct result of our holiday that we had, and this past week ending yesterday at five PM is when we have to report to, to DUCI, we had twenty-seven cases. So if this operates in the way that it did after Thanksgiving, we expect one, to potentially two more weeks of this mini, you know, outbreak in Easton, and then hopefully that will subside. Now, in terms of, you know, any other strains that are coming or the more widespread second course that is coming through our state is going to affect us, obviously that remains to be seen. But we are definitely seeing a pattern in after-holiday numbers. That has been validated after this vacation. Our numbers just peaked exponentially, and of course, when we do contact tracing or when we try to determine dates of infection, of course, you know, the, the vast majority were December twenty-fifth, December thirty-first, February, January first, and so obviously, this indicates an influence from behaviors over a vacation. So we just want to keep that in mind. We are drawing people's attention to that on our chart with the gray that, that I have indicated on these periods after vacation weeks. I think it's just very important for people to keep in mind, we have an upcoming February vacation, we have an upcoming April vacation, and it's very important for people to be cognizant that the behaviors do have a direct impact on the numbers that we have in the district. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
So I don't, I don't know if this is going to be a, it might be, this might be on executive session, so I'll just wait, sorry. As now that I'm looking at the thing. Do, so you're having trouble find, there, there's trouble finding substitute teachers for people that are either out because of quarantine?
Sure. So, you know, typically speaking, our, our substitutes are people who are retired, who are looking for some itinerant work, daily work, you know, deciding day, day by day if they'd like to come in or not. Or moms with young children who are in school, who perhaps want to have some school hours, and again, want to be able to take job assignments on a day-to-day basis. These are two subgroups that are perfect profiles of people who would not want to come into a school building during a pandemic. So we have lost many of our traditional substitutes or people who have been substituting for us for years are, are suspending their interest in being substitutes, combined with the larger number of people that are out for quarantines or being close contacts or illness or whatnot. So I, I do have to say, we are, we are very appreciative that people are taking it seriously when they do exhibit some symptoms or they do have a concern about their health, they are staying home. We don't want to encourage people not to do that, but it does make it extremely challenging for, for staffing, of course.
Okay, and then there's something else I was gonna ask about that, about substitutes, but that's okay. All right. All right. Any other questions? Oh, I know. You had, I, this was in my head. You had spoken, I think, the last school committee meeting about Martin Luther King Day being kind of a a look at where we are. I know that numbers are on the rise, but are we looking at full day for, I know, we, you know, because of where we're at right now, thirty, twenty-seven, so forth. Is full day even on the horizon yet?
I, we have to see the numbers go down before that were to happen. We have a plan in place. It is clearly articulated in our school reopening plan. We can implement that on a moment's notice as soon as we can decrease our social distancing to below six feet. As soon as that happens, we're ready to go. We just need to get to a point where our numbers support that, and the CDC does no longer recommends six feet.
Okay, but we couldn't, the cohort, like cohort A couldn't do a full day, and then cohort B could do a full day? No?
Well, full days are something different. Full days aren't possible.
That's what I'm asking about.
Oh, sorry. Full, I thought you meant about bringing kids in.
No, no, no. I, six feet is fine with me. Okay, go ahead.
Full days are not possible right now because of the schedule we had to implement in order to have facilitators help stack. We, the facilitators would no longer be available because they would have to go back to their traditional roles, and for elementary, that would be devastating to those classrooms. And for secondary, it's a little bit easier, but we do have some logistical issues with providing lunch, which obviously, if students were in full day, we would have to have them there. Right now, that's a challenge. Students in the middle school and the high school share the same bus routes, and so we need them to stay on the same schedule. So there's a lot of confounding factors there as well, but we're looking at it every day, and our goal is to get everybody back and everybody in a full day.
Right, and I think you had said last time, something about the middle school schedule, but I, have they, have there been any changes or anything that could?
We have some fantastic administrators and guidance counselors over there. They've been working on it. They do not yet have a fix for that. It's been very difficult to provide such a, such a quality of education in this hybrid model, but it did require an awful lot of change on the part of the staff and the, the schedule. And so to, to have that go back is extremely challenging as well.
If I may add, we would not be able to have the, the quantity of live instruction that we have currently if we didn't have the schedule that we have. That was a lot, but what, what I'm saying is that we, our live instruction number, our student learning time number is very high in comparison to neighboring districts. Our average is forty-seven hours over ten days, and neighboring districts are not meeting the minimum requirement of thirty-five hours. And I do, I do, I do think that that is because of the model that we're implementing, and one of the things that I'll share in my report is, next school committee meeting, I do want to present to you about the hybrid model. Taking facilitators away from elementary teachers, it, to me, is just not an option. We can't do that. They, they would not, this model would not be successful without facilitators in the elementary classrooms. They, and, and again, the, the, the ideal model is that all kids are in, are in, you know, this is not a substitution for what we know is best practice, but in the current circumstances, the model that we're implementing, in my opinion, cannot be successful without the implementation of facilitators. In fact, when I am, when I'm, when I'm speaking with other districts right now about how to increase their student learning time, that is one of the primary things that I say, and, and many districts are having to shift their models right now to meet that requirement, and thankfully, we are not having to do so.
Yes, and I will say, we have been contacted by many districts because that published report came out and districts saw that Easton was among the highest for the number of contact hours that we have with students, whether it's this sort of online interaction or in person. And, you know, Chrissy, I, I keep shuttling them over to Chrissy, and she meets with all of them and really goes over our model with them. We have an exemplar as a model. And I've said many times, and I will continue to say it, what we have for our students right now is one of the best in the state right now, as recognized by the Department of Education as such. It is not the best for staff. It is very difficult for staff, and our staff is sacrificing to make this work. But it is the best for students right now. If, if we are going to maintain the six-foot distancing. If we go below six feet, then we can, we can make modifications, but we aren't there yet.
Okay, thank you. Chrissy, just to go back, I know Jackie, one second. You wanted to also be on the agenda, I know there was an agenda, you wanted to talk about your classroom visits and.
Yeah, next, next school committee meeting.
So is that what you were just talking about? That's the same thing, okay. All right. Jackie?
This is a, a little different. So Jen, if you have something that's kind of on this subject and you want to go, that's.
Sure, so it was just about, if we could, and it, it might be a different topic, but if you can give us an update on how many previously fully hybrid students will be returning, how many opted to stay completely remote, I'm sorry, remote, how many fully remote opted back in, and were we able to find seats for everybody who wanted to come back? And are they, are they going, going to be able to start after the long weekends?
Good, thank you. I should have had that on the agenda as an update. That's a great question. Chrissy's gonna look for the number right now. I can see she's doing that. We did discuss this as a leadership team. We were able to place every remote student who asked to return. As you know, we, we did not guarantee that if they were a student with a last name of A or B, they would be on a cohort like we did with the first batch, of course, because we had to make sure that we weren't overpopulating certain classrooms with a small cohort on the other side. We were able to do that. We were able to keep siblings intact. We also, I think there was only one school that had to move staff members' children from going four days a week to two days a week, which we had explained may be a possibility, and it was, and so we did need to do that, I think, in two instances. Chrissy? Very, very small number. But otherwise, we were able to accommodate everyone, maintain the safe distancing, maintain six-foot social distancing, maintain the classes, and those students will be starting on January nineteenth.
And so the number I have is, out of five hundred seventy-eight families that responded, four hundred four students are remaining fully remote, and one hundred seventy-four students are returning to the hybrid model.
And we had about six hundred total that were remote in the first place, so there's maybe less than a hundred that didn't respond. So they are staying home, remote, yeah.
Exactly. Those that didn't respond are staying.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update.
Jackie?
Again, so this is a little off this topic, but I was just wondering if you could just give a brief example of how contact tracing works. I'm just kind of wondering like what you find out a student is, has tested positive, what do you do? Or the Board of Health gives you, here are the people who tested positive, what do you do?
So, first of all, for a positive student, we make sure they're not in the building. That could happen, right? So the Board of Health gives us the name of a positive student, we immediately contact the school, make sure they're not in school. If they are in school, because sometimes we tell them before their health provider tells them that they're positive. We send them to the medical waiting room. We have them dismissed immediately. Then we identify who all that student, all of those students' close contacts. So I will, for example, take a high school student. And I'm saying I because unlike every other Commonwealth in the district, because of our shortage of staff, Chrissy and I are doing contact tracing for the Eastern Public Schools right now. And it is extraordinary task. We identify who the student is. We identify whether they have any siblings, because if they have siblings, they are by nature close contacts. So we have tracking sheets, six of them, with each of the school nurses. We put the positive student in there. There's identifying information that has to go with it, so we have to look them up in our X two system. We have to put things like their address, their date of birth, and so forth. We, or, the inverse is true. There are many times where a parent will find out before it's reported to the Board of Health, and so the nurses communicate with us that way. They will put in the log, the, the tracker sheet that a student has identified as positive, and then we meet with the Board of Health to confirm whether that is true and what that test date was. And then we meet with the Board of Health to confirm whether that is true and what that test date was. Then, in order to do contact tracing, we begin by looking at the student's bus. Were they, and then we have um.
First, we, we check their attendance to find out if they've been in school.
Thank you. We check their attendance to make their attendance records. Because they may be positive, but maybe they haven't been in school, and sometimes that is the case because maybe they were home as a close contact. Uh, but if we determine that. They were and we do close contacts, we um. Look up each clo- we, we, for that positive student, excuse me, we look at their bus. We look to see if they um. Were on the bus, we look to see who sits around them on the bus, we identify those kids. And for each one of those kids, we have to check their attendance records to make sure they were in on that day also. Um, then we go back to the original student and we check to see if they're involved with any activities or sports. If they're involved with any activities and sports, we have to notify Bill Matthews so that he can notify the. Um, coaches and we can determine if they had any recent um practices, events or um games. Um, if so, we determine who the close contacts are, we develop a letter for him, which has the release dates and he sends it to all the athletes. Then we determine which of the classes a student was in. Um, that day. They have six classes a day, so we individually go into all six classes and look at the seating charts. We look at where their proximity, proximity to the teacher in the room as well. And then we identify any student that was within six feet of them. For us, that's anyone before, behind, or to the left or right of the student. Um, even though the desks are six feet apart, we. Contact trace for everyone who sits next to the student in case the desks move, in case it was coughing, anything like that, to be sure that everyone's perfectly safe. We then contact the teacher of all of those classes to make sure that they don't self-identify as somebody that was close to any of their students for. Uh, more than fifteen minutes within six feet. For each of the contacts, um. Same as the bus, we check each of the contacts, could be thirty, forty kids. We check each of their attendance records to make sure they were in school. Um, when the student was infectious, if not, we take them off the list, but if they were. Then we have to insert all of their names on the tracking sheets for the school with all the identifying information. We also have a contact tracing sheet that goes to the Board of Health. We have to provide, I think. Twelve or thirteen columns of information. Um, about the student that goes to the Board of Health. And then we could, we generate letters that go home to the family members of every person. With their release dates of when they should be in quarantine, information from the CDC on when and how they can be tested. Give them information about the testing sites, we send the letters. Um, and the principal, then we contact the principal and the principals make a phone call to every home to tell the students that the letters are coming. Um, that is for. One positive case. We have had since the beginning of school, um, one hundred and twenty two. Cases that we have done this with, and I can't even count how many close contacts there have been.
We have not had to contact trace for all of those positive cases, however. So that's really important to note, and I just, I do want to commend the Easton families. Because they have kept their kids home. If, and, and again, going back to our model, our teaching model. Um, they wouldn't, you know. They may not have been as, as um, as readily keeping the children home. Because they know that they can access the classroom at home remotely. So I, it's, I think that, you know, this compilation of everything together, coming together, I think that it just shows that. You know, we do not have a high number of, that we've had to contact, uh, uh, we don't, we've had to contact trace a lot, but we haven't had to do it. For, for a significant number of the, compared to the positive cases that we have.
And none of, uh, it's important to note that none of the students we have contact traced for have. Become positive as a result of being in contact with that student. Um, now, I, I can't tell you how many off the top of my head, but I can tell you, for example, we have. We currently have six OA teams that are in different stages of quarantine. Um, just the swimming team had, I don't know what Chrissy, thirty or forty kids on it. So all of them are considered close contacts and are contacted. Same thing with all the other sports, all those teams have, you know, dozens of kids and they're all close contacts. That's just the sports and then, of course, um. Of course, the classes too.
Jen?
So given some of the budget updates that we have and the possibility of having more aid come in and, and what was set aside by the town to help. Before we knew that there was another package coming, is there any possibility of hiring somebody to take this over because. I can tell you is the, is the people who, you know, supervise you. We, we assume you need to be doing other things.
We're also doing that.
Yeah.
We um, we did have a meeting with the union this week because um, the nurses are in a bargaining unit. Uh, we're not looking for the nurses to do it, but we are looking for them to um, work with people that. We want to hire temporarily to do it, so we are in conversations with them right now. Uh, because they're a bargaining unit, we do have to come to an agreement, so we're working on that.
Okay.
My eye for still stands.
Caroline, do you have a question?
No, no, I didn't. Did I raise my hand? I didn't mean to.
I just want to make sure, you know, you've been pretty quiet, so I just want to make sure you're all set there.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lot of research to do.
He does. All right, any other questions on district update? All right, Chrissy, public comment.
There is none.
They all fell asleep after that explanation.
There are no questions in the, in there, okay? All right. Um. Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Oh, that was it.
That was it? You're all set?
Yes, I'm all set, thank you.
You're sure? I'm sure you'll be popping in anyway, because you always.
I always forget something, yes.
You do, that's all right. Um, uh, Assistant Superintendent notes, Chrissy.
You know I have a lot to say.
I do.
So I do want to, I do want to update everyone on the, the status of MCAS. If I may, uh, the department is taking following steps, the, the test will be modified, the, the testing system will be modified this spring. They are still going forward with the MCAS, however, I do want to just share with you some of the updates. The first. Is that they are modifying the competency determination for the class of twenty twenty one. So the makeup MCAS administration window for twelfth graders that was scheduled to open today has been postponed. Commissioner Riley will recommend to the Board of Education, um, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, that the competency determination. Which is, the acronym is CD, requirement be modified in English Language War- Arts and Mathematics for students in the class of twenty twenty one. Who have not yet earned their CD. The recommended modification would allow students to receive their competency determination. By passing an approved course and demonstrating competency in that subject in lieu of a qualifying MCAS score. Uh, seniors who will, who still want to take the test may take them later this school year. Members of the class of twenty twenty one will also have opportunities to receive additional academic support this spring. Um, we're still determining what that, what that would look like. There also, there's a shortened MCAS testing time. Um, it hasn't been identified yet for grades. Uh, three through eight. The department will significantly reduce testing time for students in grades three through eight through a session sampling approach. In which each student will take only a portion of each MCAS assessment in each subject. This modified MCAS administration will preserve the, the, the. The department believes that it will preserve the validity and reliability of the test at the school, district and state level. Um, when combined with other data points, this approach, they determine will provide meaningful diagnostic data at the individual student level. Um, there's also going to be accountability relief. So the commissioner will not be naming or recommending to the board any new underperforming or chronically underperforming districts. Um, for schools in the upcoming year. And they're also extending the access testing window, so access, A C C E S S. Testing for English language proficiency is key to strengthening education programs for our English learners. And the department is extending the window until May. It typically ends in February and we are taking um, advantage of that option. Or do you have any questions about the MCAS update?
Chrissy, does, does anybody? I mean, is it just me? Uh, does anybody argue with Desi and say this is nonsense? This is nonsense. These kids. Are going through hell. And you gotta give them the freaking MCAS. I am against it. I'm sorry, I know it's not you two, but I just am, this infuriates me more than anything.
Commissioner at length about this at our last conversation, which was this, was Thursday? Chrissy, Thursday?
Yes.
He said that uh, he does not support using the tests um. For um, accountability.
Right, Chrissy just said that.
He, what he does. Use, want to use it for is to measure. Potential loss. Because of COVID. So.
Kind figure that out just by.
I'm just telling you what the commissioner said, it's definitely not our call, because.
It's also hard because it, he's measuring, they're, they're measuring loss with MCAS, however. There's also a lot that has been gained through this, you know, we are, the technology, skills of our students. Have, have, and staff, of course, have drastically increased. And their ability to, they're becoming more independent learners. Um, at a faster pace, and that's not going to be measured in MCAS. I do think that there will be a lot of good that comes out of this. And, and unfortunately, that goodness will not be, will not be measured by this assessment, and it's a shame.
Thank you, sorry, I get a little crazy. Go ahead.
Does anyone else have any questions about that? So more information to come, we don't know the testing schedule yet. Um, so our professional development day is tomorrow, so that is a reminder to all families that there will be no school for students. Uh, we, the professional development day obviously is for our staff, the day is focused on diversity and inclusion for all students. We are very thankful to our partnership with Raising Multicultural Kids. And um, the Safe Schools uh of Massachusetts Department through Desi for providing our two morning workshops. RMK, Raising Multicultural Kids, is hosting a panel discussion called A Walk in Their Shoes. During the panel, three members of the Eastern Community will share what it's like to navigate life in their skin. This panel was conducted over the summer for the Greater Eastern Community through RMK, and we're so thankful. That they'll be providing the session again specifically for our staff. The other session is called Promoting Resilience and Healthy Outcomes for LGBTQ Students. During this session, staff will explore policies, best practices and resources. For supporting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer and questioning students and families. With a focus on transgender and gender diverse youth. The remainder of the day will be um focused on collaboration between sta- between staff. Um, for the remainder, for collaboration for planning for the year. I did send you all, I hope you saw the, the agenda that I did share with all of you. You're more than welcome to attend our morning sessions if you are interested.
Thank you.
Or available. I know you're always interested if you're available. Um, the, just what, an update on, we have started the search for the new Oliver Ames High School Principal. The review of applications will begin on February first, so applicants have until that date to apply. We have a wonderful committee uh who's dedicated to finding the best person for the position. Um, applications are coming in and I'm excited to start looking through them and sorting out. Those that aren't licensed, as they will not go through, uh, and we'll be sharing those, those applications with our committee. So that we may choose who we interview. Um, lastly, I just, I mentioned already the hybrid model, at our next school committee meeting, I will be presenting. The Eastern Public Schools Hybrid Model to you. This will include some of my findings from my classroom visits as well as recommendations for however long we need to remain in this model. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chrissy? Okay. Uh, school committee notes, Caroline, you're first.
I know you'll be shocked, but I don't have anything this evening.
I'm not shocked.
I am, no.
Are you really? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not shocked, nothing shocks me anymore. All right, well, yeah, it does. Okay. MCAS, COVID tracing, uh, there's a lot of things, all right. Uh, Michelle?
I have nothing.
Wow, you guys. Okay, that's all right, that's good. Um, um. Jackie?
So I have a few things, I'll fill in for Michelle and Caroline.
All right, go.
Um, the first is to let people know that McLean Hospital has free webinars. Um, all you have to do is sign up for their emails, and even if you can't make a particular webinar, they can send you the recording. So, for example, I went to one on child and teen mental health and one on stress management. Very interesting, they're informative, there's mechanisms to submit questions if you have them, so um, I would highly recommend that.
What hospital was that?
McLean.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the second thing is I wanted to thank the Human Rights Committee and Raising Multicultural Kids. For all the work they've been doing with our schools and community even during this pandemic. Um, obviously, the need to continue to educate our children on inclusiveness and acceptance of differences. Is vital and I believe is our best hope for a more tolerant and peaceful future. Just my little two cents. Um, and then finally, I want to thank again our administrators, education, educators. And health professionals for their tireless work on behalf of our children and families. We each know what struggles we have and maybe we know those of our friends and neighbors. But they see hundreds of children every day who need increased support and it, and in addition to doing their regular jobs. They have the responsibility of finding help for these children and families, and I'm sure that's not a responsibility they leave at the door. When they go home, but they carry it with them. And I'm sure it weighs heavily on them at times, so I just wanted to thank them all for all they're doing for us. That's it.
Ditto. Very good, thank you, Jen.
Just a few things, um, one, just some updates, I was able to, was to watch some um. Various town and, uh, board and committee meetings this week, so among the Board of Health. And the Select Board uh this week, and there is um, some exciting work going on. With preparing um, our own town first responders to be able to administer COVID testing. And it's part that, so there is uh free testing that's happening Saturday, I believe all slots are full, it was by appointment. Uh, but it's part of a pilot to prepare for logistics of being able to um administer vaccines, so. I appreciate, um, you know, the, the, there's a constant partnership among all of the different departments in, in town. To do the best for citizens and public safety, um, and to use the resources that we have, so. Um, kudos to them and, and hopefully as vaccines become more widely available, that'll help. Uh, be able to get them to uh all the folks in town. Um, who need them. Um, it was really exciting to watch the school building um committee meeting last night, it was definitely um, a light. In the darkness to, to see that this is, you know, still continuing and it's really amazing, um, so I'm looking forward to. The broader presentation um in an update, so I think it'll be good for people to have something. Really exciting and positive to look forward to, so thank you uh to, to Jackie and Caroline for your. Representation on that board and for all the work that everybody's doing on the school planning committee behind the scenes. Um. Let's see, oh, also wanted to commend the staff for their response to last week's events in the Capitol. Um, my, I know my kids had appropriate discussions in their classes and that must have been. Just a heck of an event and something totally, you know, that nobody could really prepare for, and I think. Uh, the teachers who spent time talking about it with students at an age appropriate level did a fantastic job of responding very quickly. To something unprecedented once again. And then uh, the last thing is, is again, another, I'll repeat my appeal to parents. Especially of high school students, um, we know our kids don't make better, you know, the greatest decisions, so let's make better decisions. Please stop hosting parties. Please stop sending your children to parties. It really has a huge, huge effect. On the greater community, it only takes. One positive student to impact dozens, if not hundreds more. Um, and I commend the student who wrote an editorial in the paper um encouraging uh, the fellow students at OA to also make good choices and, and be thoughtful about how they socialize, so please, let's do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a couple things, first of all, uh, I am in the process of writing the town report, the school committee report for the town report. And I'll just wanna put capital C-O-B-I-D and be done with it, but I can't, so it's getting there, we're working, I'm working on it. Um I know winter sports.
I thought the same thing for mine, Nancy.
Oh, let's do it together. All right, um winter sports, I know they're all over the place, but hopefully, I don't know, hopefully it will get better, we'll see. I, I feel bad for all the students that, you know, have signed up to play, and now it's, you know, kind of a mishmash all over the place. Um Our next meeting is January twenty-eighth at five PM on Zoom. Um and that's all I have. And I just wanna echo Jackie's, and have all of us, really, I mean, five of us could say the same thing. Thank you EPS staff, you are amazing. You're the E- Eastern Families, you are wonderful, and I know that you're frustrated, I understand that, we all understand that. But we really have to just keep the numbers down and do the best that we can. It's going to go away at some point, hopefully. Um, Chrissy, did you just get some questions? Or you're all set? There's no questions, right? Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion at this point. Anybody else? We're all set? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to um, enter.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
I'm so sorry, uh, let me just look at them, I, I didn't see them, my, my screen was smaller.
Okay.
Maria Picanzi, Five Wedgwood Drive, let's talk about March to June. Per Dr. Fauci, vaccines will be widely distributed, including teachers and the general public. And science has shown that schools are not super spreaders, the anticipation is in March that trends will show improvement. So can children go back to traditional rules for full day, or at least, or at the very least? M, I don't know what that means. I understand this is challenging, but in, in-person education is better than this remote, teachers are doing great, can we talk about the coming months?
Yep, we're, we're all set. We have the ability to transition to students in the current model, attending four days, students attending five days, and students going back to full schedules. We just, so we're prepared, we just need to, the um, the data to support it, and those vaccines to come out, so we can let people know. You know, we can give them a one, two-week notice, we know people have to adjust their um, schedules perhaps, and transportation, but we are ready, we have a plan, we've had a plan, we're just, we're just waiting for the numbers to support it.
And then, um, Christie McDonough, Fourteen Cedar Drive, thank you Jen for raising at that point about teachers discussing the events at the Capitol. Our daughter is in eighth grade, and her civics teacher, Mr. Vis- Vissnauskas, did a tremendous jo- job addressing it. We were grateful he lived in the moment, and addressed it with the students, and gave them an opportunity to process their thoughts and ask questions. That's all.
Thank you. Caroline?
Actually, I, I took my, my uh, robotic hand down, but um, I did, um I'm always the sort of the, the doomsayer, but um, I have been doing a lot of reading about the vaccine rollout, and I don't think we, we can be very confident that by March we'll have the majority of uh, say, teachers and certainly students vaccinated, or even June. It's just hard to say, but every time they give a, an approximate date or an estimate, suddenly, they announce that it's another three weeks before they'll even begin with that group, so it's, it's, um, you know, I'm certainly hopeful, but not confident that we're going to have the kind of rollout that we really need to get back to normal.
Yeah, we could, we could give dates now, but they would be in disingenuous. We are going to change them if the data does not support it, so you know, I know some districts are doing that, but they will be changing them if they have to, and if not, we will be adding ours to them, so it, either way, you know, it is happening, we are ready, we're just waiting for just need to catch up, and as soon as that happens, we're, we're, believe me, we can't wait.
Well, I know that's a big focus of the new administration, to provide funding so that we really can escalate the vaccine administration, but you know, so far, that has been um, much less effective than we had hoped.
Okay, you all set, Caroline?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to uh, enter into executive session and nod to return to discuss strategies with respect for collective bargaining with all units, A, B, paraprofessionals, food service, custodial, secretary, clerical, and in my opinion, having these discussions in open session would be detrimental to our bargaining position. Do I have a second?
Wiseman's second.
Uh, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Our next meeting is January twenty-eighth, thank you, everybody.